Okay, because we have such a short period of time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the Brookline BCA meeting to order at 6:02. The first order of business will be to review changes to the agenda if needed. Does anyone see any changes that we have to do in just a short agenda? And the next thing would be scheduled members of the public. And with us is Leslie Goldman, representative. And I spoke with her already, but if she would like to address the audience, that would be great. And give us an idea of what's going on with the redistricting.
So I am representative, I am Leslie Goldman, I am your representative currently. Many of you haven't met, so it's good to see you even from afar. The meeting of the BCA, of course, is in response to the Legislative Apportionment Board, which is known as the LAB. And of course, every 10 years by the Constitution, we have to do our reapportionment. It's pretty straightforward. The Constitution says the census of that decade gets divided by 150, and then each district has to be, represent that number of people. It's about 4,300 with the 2020 census. So the Legislative Apportionment Board, the LAB, has to come up with districts for the House and for the Senate. Currently, the House has been presented, the Senate not yet. The current maps, which is, can be found on the Secretary of State website under Apportionment Board, was voted in with a vote of four to three, which I understand is close for the LAB vote compared to past times. The vote that was approved, or the maps, excuse me, that were approved, was a one-district, one-representative map. The process then is that it goes to the BCA of each town. The BCA gets a chance to respond to the map, and then that response is sent back to the LAB, the Apportionment Board. They may revise their maps based on the information they get from the BCA's. And then it goes to, in this case, since it's the House, the House Government Operations Committee. And once they make their recommendations, it goes to the full House. There are five criteria, which I believe you have from the Secretary of State, because a letter was sent to every BCA, which allows the BCA to respond to the maps using those criteria. The BCA is, the Secretary of State and the LAB is asking for a response by November 15th. So that's the process that I believe this meeting is here for, that you're meeting tonight for. I am part of the Rockingham BCA, so I know about our process. And I'm very willing to answer any questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I appreciate that. And I don't know how much input you are allowed to being in the position you are to, you know, to address us. But I guess the gist of this meeting is to see if there's any pushback to the map that we've seen where we are joining forces with Westminster. And as I've discussed this with a few other people, Westminster doesn't seem to be a great fit for us. We're a town of 550 people, Westminster, that means must have 3,000 people. So I don't know how we would be equally representative with one representative. Although, the survey did show that the vast majority of Vermonters do want to have one representative for one district. So that's gonna be really difficult.
Yeah, Guy, if I could make a couple of comments. I'm not sure that that survey, you know, I've seen some questions raised about the validity of the survey results and who was included in that survey. I don't think one would, it was necessarily a random sample and doesn't necessarily have statistical weight. So that's an interesting question that I think is still out there. So that's one piece. I think, I want to be sure that you understand that the second map, the one that the three members of the Apportionment Board voted for, is also available on the website. And that does not include a one-member, one-district proposal. It does recommend several two-member districts, several more than was in the one-person, one-member. And I think, and that's, the woman's name is Jean Albert, and that map is on the Secretary of State website. And I believe in that proposal, Brookline is in a map, or is in a district with Westminster and Rockingham. So that those three towns would then be considered one district, and it would keep Rockingham whole. The one-member, one-district map for Rockingham was not approved of at all by the BCA because it carves out Saxon's River. And, you know, Saxon's River is fully integrated into the town of Rockingham. So the preference for our area is to have a district that includes Rockingham, Westminster, and Brookline, which is, I believe, what the BCA sent up to the Secretary of State.
Okay, well, the survey that I'm quoting was forwarded to me, or was on the Secretary of State's website. So that was the only thing that I had to go by.
Oh, totally, yeah, I saw that same information.
I'm not challenging their integrity, but the bottom line, that...
No, no, neither. But I'm just saying, I've heard it said, I'm not sure of the statistical validity of that survey. It's a question.
But it is a good idea to be representative, one representative for a district. And to me, that makes a lot of sense. That seems to be a more democratic thing. So I will ask my fellow board members if they have any questions or any pushback in regards to the map. I did not see the map where Brookline was joined with Westminster and Rockingham. I did not see that map, but maybe I missed it.
Is this, is this, is this Rockingham here?
It's in the northern part, yes.
You know, this, yeah, that's...
That's Rockingham?
Yes, that's just a portion of Rockingham.
Just a portion, yeah.
Yeah. I saw that, but that was just a portion, and it didn't really leave Rockingham whole because it was just the south corner of it. I'm sorry, I didn't see that map. So again, what I'm saying is that for Brookline, with 530 people, 540 people, we're not, you know, it's not a real good fit for us, but it's the best we can do because of Bratton. Vermont has four or five big city hubs and the rest are all small towns. So that's what it is. So I'll just let my fellow board members address any concerns or anything that they would like to see us put on this response form for the Secretary of State. Just people want to see.
If I make another comment, if I may. I think that in a way you have sort of three options. One is you could accept the one-person, one-map, you know, that, the four group, or you could look at the other map and say that you prefer to be in the Jean Walter map, or you could say you prefer no change at all, that you're very happy with your Windows 3 configuration and you rather, you know, continue as is. Those are the three choices that I see. There may be more, but I don't, I don't know what they are. I'd be curious to know if you thought there were others.
So just so you know, Leslie, I just pulled up the alternate map that the minority members on the committee put forward. So we're all, I don't know that any of us had seen that before now, but I think we're quickly looking at that. So I assume I'm correct in saying that, so in this map, Rockingham, Westminster, and Brookline, in their entireties, would be part of a two-member district.
That's right.
Right, okay. So that's the decision.
So that's an alternative?
That's the, that's the alternative on the table, yeah.
Okay. And basically, the input that we add to the state, they will take that in consideration and they pretty much will make up their own mind anyway.
Well, I hope that there's...
So anyway, so if anyone else would like to ask Leslie a question or have any things that we should incorporate on that form that I'm going to submit by the 15th, it's basically going to be any objections or any comments that you would like in regards to the proposed redistricting.
I mean, I think, I guess I'll just say along the lines of what you talked about. I mean, it seems odd, but maybe this is the only way to do it. And maybe there are other, to be honest, I haven't gone through and tried to examine the map intricately to know whether there are other towns in the same situation. But, I mean, we technically share a border with Westminster, but it's not like you could get to Westminster directly from Brookline. I mean, we really, we share a wooded boundary. We have no real interaction with Westminster, generally speaking. But, and I don't know if there are a lot of other towns that are in similar situations in this proposal, but that just seems less than ideal if there was a way to avoid it. But maybe there's a way to avoid it.
Bruce, do you have any, anything? Joseph, can you hear this conversation?
Yeah, I can. And I suppose I'm just gonna echo the sentiments of David and you, Guy. But I will say that, you know, under, under any system, we're a small town, so it's, you know, it's not like we're gonna have a huge amount of say one way or another. But it does seem odd that, that we're being lumped in with communities that we really have no interaction with it. I mean, it's even less than to say that we, there's not really a road that goes there. It's, the people of Brookline, I don't think really have a strong, you know, community interaction with Rockingham or Westminster. You know, it's, I know it's not on the choice, it's not one of the choices, but being lumped in with a town like Townsend or Newfane, I think that would be something that everyone could get behind because that's where our community interacts. But I personally, unless I'm missing something, I don't see an improvement with either of these proposals when you compare it to the system that we currently have.
That's a good point.
All right, so that's a very good point. Thanks, Joseph. So I think at this point, Leslie, it seems to be consensus that the Board of Civil Authority for Brookline is not really on board with the proposal. And we can just submit a comment saying that it doesn't seem to fit, Stan?
I sat down and analyzed the census information for the towns that are in the northern two-thirds of Wyndham County, looked at the population changes, looked at the ratios relative to the ideal numbers that they're looking for. And I went and itemized six reasons in writing why we shouldn't be positioned with Westminster. And I came up with 11 reasons, very good valid reasons, why we should be coupled with Newfane, Townsend, Athens, and perhaps Grafton. When you take the population of those three towns and look at the resulting number of population, and then factor in the ideal number, the limit of variation is one-half of 1%, which is about the best ratio that could possibly be come up with. When you look at the other Wyndham County towns that are being proposed and coupled off the graph or chart that is on the website for the state. So I'm, I'm prepared to, and when you look at also the fact that I was advised within the last week and a half that that particular, the LAB, has already divided basically in half some of the towns, about 50 towns in the state of Vermont already. When you look at the numbers of the surrounding towns from those four towns that I personally like to see, just one of a ward or committee, there are other ways that those other towns can be split up to make numbers come out any way you want. I know back 10 years ago, when Carolyn Partridge was here at a town meeting, at our town meeting back when, there was a lot of, there were negative comments about being coupled and brought into what we currently have because it was felt to be that Putney Mountain Extension northward and the fact that, you know, we have a hospital here, we have a volunteer fire department here. Many of the families in those four towns are interrelated and married. We have Oktoberfest on the common of Newfane. We have our school system as such that Brookline participates in the elementary level with Newfane and on a high school level with Leighton and Gray and Townsend. Yeah, our postal service is segmented. So, and those are all included in the, one of the 11 reasons why we shouldn't be going where we, where we are currently and why we shouldn't be looking at this new proposal. So I don't know how the Board, BCA Board wants to handle this, but I mean, that's my suggestion. If we're gonna offer a change, and I know you want to say something. And I do want to thank you for being here tonight or listening. That's critical, we shouldn't forget that.
Yeah, of course. I just want to say, Stan, I think you raise a really important point that there is a fourth option. And you make a good case for that, which is that your, your community, and I think one of the criteria is the cultural interaction of the area, is, you know, Townsend and Newfane, and that there's a good argument to be made for that. So I think you should make, I mean, I think it's very reasonable to make that argument.
Well, that's one of the three criteria in the, at the end with the final decision, based upon whether we're contiguous, whether we share cultural things and so forth, which will help us decide what's best for the town of Brookline. And I think Stan has done a great job, and I would like him to possibly read off his answers. And I would, I'm gonna ask him to maybe respond to the feedback form and incorporate those into, and that would satisfy the needs for the town of Brookline and also, you know, give the Secretary of State an idea of how we feel.
Yeah, I will say that when you look at the way they've set up the district of Townsend, Newfane, and Marlborough, Marlborough is kind of like us relative to Westminster. Marlborough borders Halifax, there's a lot of common boundary there. There, there's no natural barrier. Socially, you've got Whitingham, Halifax, and Marlborough that could meld together as well as parts of Wilmington. So it, it, there's plenty of effort and logic to taking Marlborough out of the equation of Newfane and Townsend and allowing Newfane and Townsend to be a product of another entity of including Athens and Brookline. So, you know, it's, I did look at the larger picture, and I do see other ways that can be structured. So I'd be happy to help the BCA in any way possible. That's just my opinion, I don't, you know, want to force anything on anybody.
Yeah, yeah. I think if, well, Leslie, again, I thank you for your input. It certainly has been helpful. And I'm gonna ask Stan to read his response. And if the Board unanimously agrees with that, I think that's what we'll send to the state for our response for this meeting.
Unless somebody was to add something to it.
Unless, yep. So if you want to read off...
Sure, sure. It's headed with "suggest reapportionment of Brookline, Vermont", and begins with "The Redistricting Commission has joined Westminster, Brookline, and southern portion of Rockingham to create Wyndham District 6. It is asked if this be abandoned and that the towns of Newfane, Townsend, Athens, and Grafton be joined for a voting district. There is more to redistricting than simply meeting numerical criteria. Westminster and Brookline have very little in common. Number one, there is no direct road access from Brookline to Westminster. Two, the Putney Mountain Range geographically separates the two towns. Three, Westminster has its own school system while Brookline education is accessed in Newfane for elementary students and Townsend for upper grades. Brookline has no historical association with Westminster while it was once part of the town of Newfane. Route 30, a state highway, passes through Newfane and Townsend while Brookline and Athens are a short drive off of Route 30. Westminster is accessed by state highway Route 5 along the very eastern portion of the state. And lastly, six, Westminster has no connections of either a social or services nature with Brookline. The reasons for connecting Brookline to Newfane, Townsend, and Grafton are: one, the local hospital, Grace Cottage Hospital, is located in Townsend and both serves and employs people of the four towns. There is a large grocery store on Route 30 just north of the Newfane-Townsend line, which serves this area. There is a building supply store in Newfane which supplies, serves this area. Emergency, three, emergency services provided by Rescue, Inc. encompasses these towns and not Westminster. After-school activities entail local families of these towns to include sports, theater, graduation, et cetera. Many of the families in the proposed district are interrelated. Six, social events such as Oktoberfest, hospital fair, farmers' markets take place in these several towns. Restaurants along Route 30 serve this area. Places of religious worship are located in Newfane and Townsend. Number nine, Brookline residents participate in the volunteer fire department in Newfane and said department serves both towns. Townsend has its own volunteer fire department. Number 10, there is a private school with facilities in both Newfane and Townsend where students who desire to attend an alternate means of education or take advantage of a volunteer means of education, excuse me. And Brookline is home of a daycare business that serves the residents of this area. So we've got 11 decent, plausible, meaningful reasons why we would probably seek to do my proposal, not that it's the only proposal. So I, I just offer those comments.
Bruce, do you like the comment?
I think there's two questions. First, you propose keeping the district the way it is? Is that what you're, you're proposing, changing it to?
Totally different, to the four towns.
Okay, and you, when I understood it when you first started with your explanation, it's within a half percent that you would go with the deviation.
When you look at this proposed four-town district and look at the population that you come up with, you come up, you come up with a population of 4,287 residents. And when you take, I'm sorry, 4,501 residents is what those four towns and Grafton come to for a total. And when you subtract the ideal district population of 4,287, you come up with a difference of 214 people. When you then take that difference of 214 and divide it by the ideal population number in order to get a percentage of the ideal number that that variation represents, it comes out to be .0499 differential as a percentage, which is almost perfect, almost perfect.
I understand, that was a very good analysis.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right, if, if everyone is in concert with what Stan has just read to us, I think at this point that we have fulfilled the obligation of the Board of Civil Authority to address our concerns on the redistricting. If anyone else has any more input, now is the opportunity to say something. If not, I'm gonna delegate Stan to respond to the Board of Civil Authority feedback form and submit it to the state before the 15th of November so that our voices can be heard. Leslie, again, I thank you for your input. It was, it's been a pleasure to meet you. And also, I realize you're a busy schedule, but it was nice for you to join us tonight.
Well, thank you all for your service to our towns.
Well, thank you very much. Leslie, thank you very much for everything you've done for this district. And if this current scenario ends up being the final verdict, I think we're well-served by everything you do and everything you represent here. Community can do.
Yeah, I just want to end by saying we have a whole nother year to go, so keep in mind, I'm just gonna still be your rep for another year.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that.
Take care.
Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn this meeting. Bruce, you move to adjourn the meeting? Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourned the Board of Civil Authority meeting, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.
Fine. Okay, I'd like to begin this evening's special budget meeting for the town of Brookline. It is 6:35 PM on November...
9?
10.
10, I'm sorry.
Here we go. All right, so I guess we'll start what we have in front of us, our general town fund one.
Can Helen hear us?
Helen, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, okay, that's good, thank you. All right, so, um...
Just wondering one other thing, since she's doing us a favor, might we listen to what she has to offer? First, she doesn't want to be the main hearing at her radio.
All right, that's a good one.
I don't know if that makes any sense to her.
Where is the picture for the start video?
Um, we can start, we can. Start video. Here we go.
Okay.
Okay, so Helen, we're gonna ask you if you wanted to share anything so that we don't have to hang around for the next hour. But if you have some, some items of interest or concerns that might be important to us as we go forward in the budget season for 2022, 2023, that would be great.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of input because I don't know where the expenses were last year or what they will be coming up. I think that you guys got a letter from CTI from Susan with an estimate on how much for the mapping. You might want to think about adding another $450 to that for the online version. And the advantage to that is that when changes are made to parcels and boundary lines, they'll be updated live in real time. Otherwise, it will only be like once a year, like it is with the desktop version of TownView.
Ah, that's a good point, so it would actually get instant updating.
Right, right. The TownView and the state website would still only be updated once a year, but if we get to do the CTI version of online, then it would be updated real time as she makes the changes.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
And I don't know exactly the cost on that. I think that it's 450. I sent her an email, but I didn't hear back. I'll probably hear back on Monday. But my guess is it's probably the same rate for all the towns.
Okay. Helen, one of the reasons I invited you is that I wanted you to give an idea of how many hours do you think your position is gonna require to do it efficiently? That's one of the reasons I invited you because the last couple of years has been a little gray. And, and I want to include, you know, the CAMA, NEMRIC, and so forth. NEMRIC is gonna increase by 3%. So our dues is $5,000. So we add 3% to that, that's 150. So that'll be $5,150. Also, if we add to NEMRIC the fact that I'm considering the cloud having the talent on the cloud, which has so many advantages in today's world, which will cost approximately another $780 a year. The cloud gives us the opportunity to access NEMRIC from anywhere on any computer, which makes sense because the world being what it is today, it works. You use it in Townsend, and what's your feeling about that?
I think it's great. I mean, I can send Lister cards anytime, you know, day or night. I don't have to be in the office. I can do some research or run reports or anything I need, anytime, anywhere. And I think that's wonderful. And I don't have to worry about how many computers we have access to.
I have a question.
Bow him down.
Is NEMRIC going to be changed? Isn't there a new contract coming out and NEMRIC is not...
NEMRIC has joined forces with another organization, but NEMRIC is still NEMRIC. And they submitted a dues package, they doubled last year. We went from 2,400 to 5,000, which we did last year. And that was to be expected. With that increase has also been with the new organization they've joined forces with, are many upgrades, which, you know, NEMRIC was a little antiquated, but it's now coming up to speed. And it's a system that everyone's familiar with. A lot of towns, most of the towns in Vermont use it. I know you use it, Helen. Yes, as is Quirks, yes. But for the most part, in my 11 years using it, I'm pretty satisfied with it.
I think that the state is bringing in new software that will run alongside NEMRIC. So, and it's, certain parts of NEMRIC will feed into it for the grant list, but NEMRIC's not going away neither is CAMA. And the new software that's coming in will not be any cost to any of the towns. The state is funding it.
Right. So getting back to what you think of how many hours to efficiently, efficiently run the Lister's office in the town of Brookline. And considering, you know, I certainly enjoy having you here, and you've done a lot for us, but we have to think about, you know, no one's gonna be here forever. we have to think about, you know, no one's gonna be here forever. So in your opinion, what do you think is, you know, the the amount of time to do the job efficiently?
Yeah, I wish I had an idea. I know that I looked at my um last paycheck and it looks like I've got seventeen hundred dollars so far for Brookline in time. I and we're about six months in, right? So that should be half, but I don't think that is. It could be half, but it's hard to tell. I don't know how much time Mike has put in. And we will have a lot more properties that we need to look like, look at in like in March, which will add more time. I mean, I've I I really have um, I have no clue.
Well, I'm looking at at a current nine hundred and three dollars so far this period so far, and I I don't. Does that truly reflect the from July, August and September? July, August and coming October, does that seem?
I don't know. I was looking. I don't have that number. I can look at the pay stub and I can see that since April when I started, there has been seventeen hundred dollars. I didn't notice how many hours.
Okay.
But again, I don't know how much was put in the last couple of years, and I don't know how much Mike has put in.
Okay, how many hours are you doing right now?
Uh, right now it varies. I think it's fewer than it was, so I think I'm doing like three or four a week maybe. Um, and it will, I mean, it'll go up and down. It depends on if there are transfers, and I'm trying to do some cleanup um, so that whoever, you know, eventually takes over or comes in will um have a good base database to start working with. But I don't know, I mean, at seventeen hundred for the last six months, I don't think that that's really half. I think that that it will be more than that for the last six months. But again, I really have no idea. I don't know how much was spent in the past. So it's hard to, it's hard to guess.
Helen, when the end of the tax cycle comes and the new grand list needs to be created and you're sending out uh changes of assessment and the rationale for it. And you're looking at the uh the current use report when it's come out and make sure it's right. Is is there even a possibility of estimating what that does in terms of hours needing to accomplish those things come the end of or from like April on to the end of the?
It's, I mean, it's it's hard to tell because last year when we did it, it was all brand new because it was the first time we'd been in a town. Mike goes the current use. I don't know how much that is gonna change to be the new software. And some of the things that for the final, um, you know, for the end of the year are gonna be done on the new software, and I don't know if it's gonna be faster, I mean, you know, more time or less time. In theory, eventually it'll be less, but for the time being, I don't really know. We haven't seen any hands on yet. I mean, I hate to be, I hate to be so vague and and unknown, but I really have no clue.
Well, you know, you said that you did seventeen hundred dollars in six months. The total budget for the year is three thousand two fifties. So that's certainly doesn't sound like enough. Sounds like.
Not with the added.
Not with the extra things that we're doing, so that needs to.
So I'm looking at.
I don't think that that would be enough, especially if you guys do bring in somebody that will be learning it and I'd be training them too. But at that point, you might, in that, at that point, you might want to switch me over to not being a Lister and just being an outside contractor. I mean, that's that depends on you and how you guys do your bookkeeping.
Out of curiosity, I don't know if you can allow to say this, but what does Townsend allow for their Lister's budget?
I think that we're, we haven't, they haven't finalized the budget. Last year, I think we had twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, we seem pretty close.
But they're bigger.
Right, we're about um two thirds. I think you guys are roughly a third of the size of Townsend.
We're ten thousand, so you know, so I'm I'm thinking six or seven thousand for us to be adequately funded for this position in our town. Yeah.
That's double.
Well, again, the prior Listers.
Is not frequently attended. You're correct.
Well, it is worth noting that last, if I'm reading Samara's comparative budget report correctly, in the last fiscal year, um, even with the inactivity that we'd had for a good chunk of the year, we were a thousand dollars over budget. We spent forty-two thirty-two fifty in F Y twenty-one on Listers. Which is just an indication, and in the, and I'm going back, back in as far back as I can see on this, which is maybe F Y eighteen or something. We used to budget forty-four hundred dollars for Listers. We've steadily dropped that over the years because but so it's not like we weren't several years ago, perhaps, I'm speculating. But perhaps several years ago, when Listers were working more actively, we were probably spending, it was probably costing us four or five thousand dollars. And now, when of course costs have just gone up, with Nemrick doubling every complications of things, so. I think.
That makes sense. That makes a lot more sense to me with that, yes.
I would think five or six at least is probably an idea. And to Helen's point, I mean, if we find, hopefully, we can find multiple people. There's gonna, she's gonna, she's gonna have to train them, so it's gonna be more hours collectively for a while until people can get up speed, so it's gonna be even higher than we're, than it currently is.
All right. Well, I think that gives us some information when we get down to that point to to talk about that based upon this information.
Yeah, I just wanted to add Helen's input because it was important.
I mean, I wish, I wish I could be more helpful, but.
No, that's very helpful.
You're very helpful, let me tell you. We're very pleased to have you board and and helping out. Uh, you caught us up quite a bit, so thank you so very much.
You're welcome. I'm enjoying it.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Helen.
And you can always hang on, hang out and stay to our budget meeting if you want, or you can go and have a whole night.
Didn't you, so didn't you?
I'm talking about making birthday cake for someone who's not for birthday anymore. She's still happy.
Did we, so did we or God, you have a, I mean, I know you talked about Nemrick, the increase in Nemrick costs, but then there were other costs.
Yeah, there's some associated costs like um the mapping company that we use in C T S I or that's gonna be eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, what, right, I mean, I'll just stop you before we get to, because we don't currently have budgeted items for anything beyond Nemrick. I mean, maybe we consider rolling all those into something that we no longer call Nemrick, but we call Lister software and support or something like that.
Well, yeah, Nemrick is used for all the departments. For the treasurer, from the town clerk, from the door licensing manager and everything else, it's all the Nemrick. And that that five thousand dollars is, well, the entire tenant. It's not just the Lister's end of it. So.
I think, yeah, I don't know how you guys do it in Brookline, but the mapping is not all for the Listers either, right? Most, a lot of it is, but I think part of it is for the town clerk, right?
Yes. Right, so, you know, it kind of overlaps in different departments, but Nemrick and the mapping are shared by the town clerk and the Listers. And whoever needs to access that, you know, whether it be someone in the tablet trap or something else. But it's something that we need to have.
There are things that are specific to the Listers, which is like the um Marshall and Swift and the Apex.
Yeah, Apex.
Kama.
Yeah. Are those additional expenses each, or are they part of the overall package?
I'm not sure. I think that they're um billed separately, at least they are, is my understanding.
Except for the Apexes, I can't remember.
I don't think they're very expensive. I think that um, I think that they were like, uh, let me see, for there was seven hundred and fifty for um fiscal year twenty twenty-one in Townsend. So I think it would be um less for Brookline.
And are those things that we're paying currently?
Yes, we pay them.
Where do we put those?
I don't know, to be honest with you, I don't know how, I have to look.
I think a bunch of these things potentially are falling under computer services.
Uh, no, it's not computer services, I know that, because computer services is too wide, guys.
Right, although we're pretty consistently well over budget on what we budgeted for that. So I just wonder if, if things like that are getting put in, because I'm not sure where else they'd get put.
Part, part of it at one time was going into supplies when it wasn't a great deal of uh of money, but now the cost of escalated to a point where um it needs to have a separate line, I believe, for uh, you know, these services that we use.
So.
So we need to pin some of that down.
Yeah, so we need to then, you're saying as far as renaming, like David said, some of these line items.
Or you can lump them in with the Listers as set, but you'd have to include the Lister's salaries, the Lister's a software accounts, and I don't know if that's something you want to do.
I think we should avoid doing that. I mean, I think in a perfect world, we just create new accounts.
Yeah, we can do that.
And we do it, but I mean, just just realizing, given our current treasurer situation, that might not be the easiest thing to do, but.
Well, no, that you can just create.
Probably the best thing to do.
And the, and the issue, is there a problem with deleting it? So it sounds like you're creating an account, but then deleting an account.
Well, you're not deleting it.
Creating a highly new name.
Lister, if you, if you, if you create an account under that that expenditure or whatever it is, whatever the account code is, you can create another subset for that account. But the bottom line is that you don't want to delete anything because that stays a perpetuality, because people looking back want to know what was spent and how it was spent. So it will become inactive.
Yeah, that's inactive is sort of what I was thinking of there.
You know, just to say that someone five years from now says there was an impropriety and you say, oh, no, no, no.
So let me, let me ask you this. I, I mean, I, although I don't know that we want to get super bogged down because we're not gonna get anywhere. But other than that, so the Nemrick, just looking at the costs of this, well, we still have Helen with us. Nemrick, we think is now gonna go up to fifty-one fifty plus seven eighty.
Yes.
For the cloud, whatever.
Six thousand dollars.
Um, but then the other costs that we're talking about for the mapping and other stuff, are those costs that we currently have been paying something, and they're now just gonna get a lot more?
Yeah, well, we have been.
Personally, I think what would be important would be for us to find out where those costs have gone historically. So that we can either just increase that budget item or decide we want to create new.
Prior, prior to the mapping, we used D Bernardo, and that cost was passed on in the Listers. And basically, when I came here, the maps were ten years old, and that was not good. So I called D Bernardo and we updated it. The map should be done in our town at least every eighteen months because there are that many changes. It's a lot easier to make small changes, I mean, a small amount of changes and pay it a lot less than to have ten years where we had to pay, you know, thousands of dollars to have it upgraded, and it wasn't good for the town anyway. So uh with the new mapping that we have now, which is connected with the state, um, Susan Bobswell, who's with C T I, is gave us a figure of eight hundred and fifty dollars and Helen has added another four hundred and twenty dollars, which will give us a live update all the time. So the state is in concert with the towns' um borders, property owners and so forth. And that's the ultimate goal of the state anyway. Am I correct, Helen, in that?
Kind of. The um, the state, the website, the new program that the state is bringing in is has a G I S capability. It will only be updated once a year off of the grand list, as will the Town View, which is the desktop version of the mapping. For four hundred and fifty, it would be um an online version that C T I is providing that will give live updates as they change. I I don't know if the, if the state is eventually gonna get to be live, but I, when I was um at the webinar on Monday, I confirmed that it is only gonna be updated once a year for the state online mapping.
Okay. All right, so yeah, so basically, there's been some changes and some things that were never done until I I got here and when I asked to have the mapping updated, I don't know where they were funded before.
Right, okay.
But to wait ten years for a map to be changed is is kind of foolish.
All right, well, Helen, thank you very much for for signing on tonight and.
You're welcome. I'll be in the office tomorrow morning, so if you guys come up with anything else, then let me know, and I will um answer it to God tomorrow morning.
Well, thank you so much, Helen.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, well, that was informative. Thank you very much.
Well, I I I needed to get that clarified because that that section was a bit of a mess.
All right, so we're gonna take a look at this uh comparative budget report that was uh printed out on ten twenty-nine twenty-one.
So my understanding that we're eighty-seven ninety-seven and plus from.
I don't know what you're talking about, what, I.
Right.
One hundred and twenty-three thousand?
Yeah, I suppose one hundred and fourteen actual. So we.
Oh, okay, I, okay.
I'm sorry, I did kind of a bit out of context, I'm sorry.
All right, so I I just, okay, so we're looking at the, this is the school districts and budget. This is the current taxes net of the.
So, oh, of where the ratio.
Right, okay, sorry. So this is last year's.
Any appropriations.
Right, and then the um appropriations, including appropriations. All right, so then if we go down here to the education, tax expenses, something, I mean, now we can do any right line.
No, we can't do that because we don't have any any figures for that. Because we need, education district will set the tax, you know, tax package when they vote on it and whenever they vote. So I started with delinquent taxes and I plugged in the number of of zero because delinquent taxes should be accounts receivable. They already have been spoken for the year before. That's money that's owed us that we already have considered being part of our income.
Right.
And Samara agreed with that uh, that language because of it. And Frank Rocker also uh agrees with that. We can't count delinquent taxes as income.
Yeah, because it's taxable and it's due to us. All right, so the taxes, so zero. All right, then we go down to penalties.
Penalties, I plugged in twelve hundred dollars based upon my experience with the taxes. And I'm looking as a delinquent tax collector, uh, eight percent of the of is a is a penalty that we have. Uh, last year, we had twenty-six thousand dollars in delinquent taxes. We're down to less than two, or maybe fifteen hundred. So I predicated that on that, those figures, and that seems to be a logical figure. Interest is the same issue, uh, based upon the delinquent taxes and the taxes that were paid. I look at it every year, and I think fifteen hundred dollars is a comfortable figure to say that we'll have interest or taxes. The worst case scenario, we could have a little more, but better to conserve it than to say we're expecting it to not ever happen.
So just to. What you're saying is not on our list, so I'm confused.
Yeah, I'm, well, he's increasing it from, last year, we budgeted a thousand dollars for penalties and a thousand dollars for interest. He's saying we're gonna increase the budgeted twelve hundred and fifteen hundred.
And interest on loans up is the same?
Taxes.
Fifteen hundred, fifteen.
Yeah.
Current use dropped down a little bit this year from what I've seen. So I think fourteen thousand is a little high. I think twelve thousand is a more reasonable figure.
Yeah, that's how I need you to say it, because I.
Okay, so let's reduce it down to twelve thousand, okay?
State park parcel, we usually get around three hundred, three hundred. We have three hundred, three hundred thirty-four parcels, and we get usually ten dollars a parcel, eleven dollars, so basically, I put down three hundred and forty dollars.
That would be the same then, okay.
The U S refuge sharing thing, that's the piece of land that's owned by the governor on top of Putney Mountain. The amount that we get is 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 con, is is predicated on all the United States parks and what they generate for income, and they give a percentage to each little part. That's the civil, the civil de casino.
Civil county.
County, yes, park up there. Now, because state parks have not been used this year as much, so I'm thinking revenue will not be as high as, you know, ever, so I just put a hundred dollars there. Uh, that's not a big number anyway.
That makes sense. Interesting way that they distribute that.
Yeah. Clerk fees, last year, we had a big bump because it was a robust market. Uh, retail, I mean, sales were going crazy, V fires were going crazy. Uh, that's a once in a lifetime uh actual number. I put down the number of, I'm basing it on four hundred pages at eleven dollars a page because we charge fifteen dollars, but four dollars goes to the restoration fund. So out of every fifteen dollars, we collect four dollars. So out of every fifteen dollars, we collect four dollars goes to that fund, which is an item down below. So at eleven dollars for four hundred pages, I figured forty four hundred dollars for clerk fees.
That makes sense, you're making the.
Dog license, we have a hundred and twenty five dogs, generally speaking, we have a hundred and twenty five dogs. Uh the state gets five, we get four, so I put down, you know, five hundred dollars if we collect all the fees and everything else. Some dogs, we get a little more because you have stayed and you have um non-stayed. So the figure, a hundred, five hundred dollars, I think is a more realistic figure. We could get maybe another twenty or thirty dollars more, but five hundred dollars is a conservative number and I think it's a good number for the town. Fishing and hunting, most things are done now online, uh which is a good thing because it's uh, we only get a dollar fifty per license. And it was more of a, a thing to help people, you know, they could come to town, they'd come to your door, hey, could you get me my fishing license, okay. So uh right now, I see maybe if we get five dollars in income, that would be a lot.
I think we only did one this year.
We did a couple, actually.
So five dollars for hunting and fishing yet.
Yeah, um copies, again, this is predicated on.
I don't, I mean, are we really gonna budget five? We've historically not budgeted anything.
Yeah, I don't, whatever.
When we make the five dollars.
Yes, we had three dollars, then we had nothing, then we had a dollar fifty uh.
So we're gonna do anything, right, on the, on the fishing and hunting, zero, right?
That's fine, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, that's not gonna make a break, because uh with copies, uh I'm predicated based on the amount of activity we have here. And um I think twelve hundred fifty dollars is a fair price for copies. Considering that a lot of the copies, when people come in from our town. Uh and they ask to make a copy of their taxes, well, so I don't charge. I just think that they pay taxes, they're, someone out of town or, or a lawyer or an extractor or anything else, yes, they will pay. So twelve hundred fifty dollars for copies is a reasonable figure. Marriage and uh, I figure we get ten dollars a license, four dollars, we did four or five a year, so forty dollars is a, you know, that's another one. Birth and death certificates, there's something wrong with these figures in here, she's showing none. Uh basically, God forbid, there's a, a death, you know, the, the funeral parlor will ask for maybe six or seven certified copies. Cause they need to do different places and so forth. We get ten dollars a copy, so I'm putting down a hundred dollars, I'm thinking ten copies for birth and. And unfortunate uh death certificates.
So are you saying there's something missing here and you don't know why?
Uh yeah, I don't believe that, this is, where it says actual and the floor actually says zero.
Yeah.
Uh I'm almost sure that we did a few, but um I don't know where that went. Records restoration, this is what I talked about earlier, where we get eleven dollars, we get fifteen dollars a page, four dollars goes to the record restoration fund. And so I base that on the four hundred pages, four hundred times four, sixteen hundred dollars. And then from there on, alright, the donations, I don't know, whatever you wanna do there. Election grant, we do not have an election grant. Last year, I was able to secure a five thousand dollar election grant, which we use for our computer, our television. The mouse control and some other things that generate it, so that we don't have this year.
Those mouses you caught are under control.
That's already right.
Those mouses that you caught are under control.
I was under control. Alright, so that's, I, I address all the investments, I, I'll let you take over.
You're very happy.
Okay.
I can, I, I, if you want, I can continue what I've done on uh go to page two and select board.
What happened to investment?
No, I didn't, I didn't do that, you guys can, if you want, you can look at that.
I can sign the business.
We've always budgeted ten bucks.
Yeah.
Thank you. And that was a fine.
This goes.
Yeah.
And for the.
Keeping it in order.
And refunds?
Uh refunds and miscellaneous revenue, refunds, um I'm not sure what that entails, but when someone overpays their property taxes. Uh we have an option to apply it toward next year's revenue or refund them back, I don't know. I'm not sure what this refund miscellaneous other things is, I, I don't know.
We've never budgeted anything.
Okay.
Alright, so we won't budget it now.
Uh the select board, that's, this is where all that you folks make. I wanna write.
This, this is.
So we're noting, we're now in expenditures.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we are now in expenditures, we're slide on the, the select board, it's listed six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars without any change in salaries, that will remain the same.
This is for me.
Right?
That sounds good to me.
Six thousand five hundred and fifty.
Town clerk, um I have figured in twenty four seven ninety five, which is twenty one hours a week. Times twenty one seventy five and then there's twelve weeks a year that I'm here on Saturday morning for four hours. So I incorporate that, that all comes out to twenty four seven ninety five. And that's based at the rate of twenty one seventy five, which I have. And again, I don't know what the select board wants to do with salary increases, there has been a substantial cost of living in our town. Uh in, in the state, I should say, and nationwide, we're five point nine percent cost of living, so I don't know. Most towns do a two or three percent interest, a two, two or three percent raise on all their employees, you know, that's. What most towns do, some don't, some give more, so I don't know. What I gave you is a figure predicated on twenty one seventy five, which I can still live with and um I guess going forward. The next town clerk, you'll have to argue that with him later.
Alright, um I, I do think that as we move through and I can't say uh percentages. What, what do you think about changing your percentage rates to salaries? I know there's one of my concerns, salaries for treasurer, listers, auditors. I know insurance rates are going up, equipment costs are gonna have more maintenance costs and utility costs are all going up.
Yeah.
So whether we're paying for the municipal towns or the individual people who are working for the town, it's also a question of your own mind.
Well, the, the thing is to make the, 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 the compensation attractive so that other people may be interested. You know, if you're, if Walmart is starting off at eighteen dollars an hour and you're offering a lister fifteen dollars an hour, uh that's not very attractive.
And there's statutory requirements and penalties that so they can acquire as a lister that a clerk at Walmart is not gonna express.
Yeah.
Responsibility skills can vary different.
Yeah, so I, I, I'm just trying to give you, you know, well, for instance, and you know, sooner or later, as much as. A small town is so difficult to budget because we can only comply so many ways.
Two percent, I would, uh my final offer of the concept, two percent.
I, I would stay directly towards that in my matrix that I was considering here, looking and talking about two percent.
So the one thing I'll say is that since I've been on the board, we have not increased. We haven't done in, increases for any of the positions without reviewing the VLCT compensation study for that year.
Well, that's.
To see where everything, right.
So who's available now, they just, they came out.
Yeah.
Well, I'm.
Alright, so what I'll say is last year, when we went through the budget cycle, this was brought up.
Right.
I went through and reviewed everything in the compensation and then came back with suggestions of increases. Worth noting, we increased all of these positions a year ago.
Yes.
I'm not saying we increased them as much as we would have liked or if we should have, but we did increase all of these a year ago.
Did that.
Um.
But this would be not for, this, this would be for twenty twenty two.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm sorry, we did, we increased it during last year's budget cycle, so for the, the budget.
So this same new salary for them now.
Yeah.
Right, this would start July one.
This was July one of twenty twenty two, is what we're talking about. So I'll take that in. All this say from, on principle, I don't think we should be discussing a percentage increase without having to analyze the data from the state.
Okay.
Because that does change from year to year. I don't think it's going to change, it will have changed in a way that we will suddenly say. Oh, I don't think we should increase that by two percent, I'm not saying that, but it's an exercise that I think should be done.
Alright, so I, I, I plug in my figure based at the rate of twenty one seventy five, all the figures I'm giving you are based on the same rates that we have going internationally. If at some point you wanna change that by a percentage or anything, you can do that, so however you.
Well, that's, and I, I'm not, I'm actually, I'm addressing because these guys were talking about increasing my changes and I'm just saying, I think.
So I, I, I'm at the twenty one seventy five, I'm at twenty four seven ninety five for the hours, I just explained which the hours I do now.
Twenty four seventy five?
Yeah.
Twenty four seven ninety five, right?
Twenty five, yes, I'm sorry.
Twenty four seven ninety five.
Alright, I'm gonna, we'll take this based upon the current rates and we may come back and modify this at end of time, I don't care if that.
The treasurer, that's a, a pretty much up in the air, I don't know how that has worked out, but. Uh I'm gonna go to delinquent tax collector because I am the delinquent tax collector and it's based on a hundred eighty two hours a year at twenty one seventy five. And that comes to thirty nine fifty eight. I don't always use it and basically um it was there so that if I do a lot more hours and town clerk them. I could, you know, it would balance out with the money that I didn't use in the delinquent tax collector.
So leave it at four thousand?
Uh I have a thirty nine fifty eight.
So I wanna ask a question, but I don't want to have a spiral too far out of control, but it's a question that I think needs to be asked. In a world where you were no longer the delinquent tax collector, which is entirely a possibility. If you were to become the treasurer, because my understanding is that I don't, you cannot be both.
Oh, yes, no.
So you would have to have a different delinquent tax.
Okay.
So just looking at a world, just.
Well, let me just correct that assumption, the delinquent tax collector and the treasurer can be the same.
Can they?
Yeah, and the tax collector, yeah.
But not town clerk.
Yeah, no, town clerk, treasurer, delinquent tax collector and tax collector, you know, they're all compatible.
Really?
So anyway, but anyway, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I did not think that that was the case, but um.
The only thing is that in some cases where the towns elect to say that you get the.
They should get the comp, right, so in that, so as long as we don't do the compensation that way, then offices are compatible, okay.
That's what I, that's what I read now, maybe I, I may have misspoken, but.
No, that's, I guess, I guess it may be a different, it, maybe it's a, it's a question that doesn't necessarily, I guess that doesn't necessarily have to be based.
Yeah.
If you weren't the delinquent tax collector.
Right, exactly.
That's sad, because you might not wanna be the delinquent tax collector even if you can be. Um is the. Let's, and let's just say for the sake of argument that we would compensate the delinquent tax collector at the same rate, just to make things easy. Um is that number of hours that we just came, that you, yet a hundred and eighty hours?
Two, yeah, a hundred eighty two, I've got, it comes in two and a half hours or three hours a week.
Okay, and do you think that that's a?
I think overall.
Overall, yeah, yeah, it would be spiked on, yeah, but overall, you think that's a favor?
Cause I, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think that's.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't budgeting for you to absorb a bunch of those as town clerk.
No.
And then if you weren't the delinquent tax collector.
Right, okay, cool.
Right, so that makes.
So that, and then.
So should we, should we leave that at four thousand, around four thousand like it was?
Yes, I think so.
It's pretty close.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, four, okay.
Right.
But let me change that. By the uh.
Listers, which we were just talking about, we might need to go up to six thousand, you were saying?
Uh that's something that I guess you, you guys are gonna have to figure out because if, if you just do, if each lister did three hours. That's nine hours a week if you had, in a perfect world of three listers.
Right.
So nine hours a week times fifteen.
Three hundred thirty five dollars.
Times fifty two. It's a little over seven thousand. So, you know, uh it's, I mean, that's our perfect world, right now, we have two listers and. Um to be honest with you, I think at this point of six thousand would probably.
Yeah.
An okay number.
Yeah.
The worst we can do is be over budgeted, but not by mu, it won't be by much.
I mean, it's.
I'd rather budget a little bit more because I think the lister's salary might be something that we might wanna look at if you know what I'm saying. So I, I would probably say sixty five hundred dollars, I'd like to put it on the line, we use power, you know, whatever, probably five hundred.
Then again, what, yeah, we'll put it in and I mean, we'll see where we end up, so we'll put sixty five hundred?
Yes, sure, the treasurer.
We did, we did have the treasurer, why, why did we transfer?
Well, because I'm not sure how that's gonna work out, I don't know, because in the last, we've gone from a, a bookkeeper to assistant. Uh treasurer to a treasurer and the treasurer's gonna drop some dollars and you can get the book, I don't know, I think.
We kind of have consistency, like we did, we somewhat did last year, although this, of course, gonna change all over again. The last few years, what we've, I think, I guess I'll speak for you guys, but I think you'll agree. We've tried to look at the treasurer office somewhat in its entirety as. How much money do we, less, worrying less so about how much we've budgeted for the treasurer and the assistant treasurer. As how much we've collectively budgeted for the department, for the department.
Yeah.
Because it's never been clear from one moment to the next how that might get divided.
Yeah.
Um, one thing I'll throw out there, not that we have to figure this out right now, but I think something that has bitten us in the past. Over now, we don't have this issue because effectively, everybody who's working in our treasurer department is being paid almost the same. Close to the same. I think it might behoove us to think of all of the treasurer positions at the same rate. And how many hours we need of treasury and budget based on that. Because I don't think, in the past, we had an assistant treasurer rate and we had a treasurer rate, but. Once Samara and Louise, well, I, I said, once Louise left, that all got blown out of the water, pretty much. And then for a while, we had a treasurer who was being paid the assistant treasurer rate. And then, you know, it's all gotten very jumbled and the reality is, I don't think we, or even the people, quite frankly, who are in the treasury. Have, can put us, could put their arms around exactly how much time. Is necessary to break it and how much of one person's time is necessary versus another. So anyway, it's a long way around saying we might wanna. Continue to skip over this for the moment so we don't get too.
Alright, I'm sorry.
Fall down in speculation and come back to it.
Okay. Maybe that's where that, we were at the auditors, right?
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Auditors, uh, I don't know.
I mean, we've, yeah, I mean, we've typically been budgeting around eight or nine hundred dollars, they usually don't spend that much, however.
I did ask the audience to pick them, right?
We've, we've, maybe they'll start doing bank reconciliation, in which case we might need to bump this back up, cause they might be working more hours.
However, they've only used uh not even fifty percent, uh so I would leave it at nine then.
Yeah.
Leaving it at nine hundred um uh for the, for the next year and see how that goes.
I mean, the reality is that even if they do, even if they work twice as many hours as they have been, it's only nine hundred more bucks. It's not crushing our, it's not a huge number if we got it wrong, you know what I mean? It's not like it's gonna go from nine hundred to five thousand.
So then you might need to be audited then.
Assistant town clerk, I have assistant, eight hours a week, two four hour days, that's sixteen dollars an hour. And that comes to sixty six fifty six when I multiply the weeks and so forth, so that should pretty much stay the same. And that's all predicated, like we say, the salaries being what we are right now.
Right, so that's sixty five?
So we leave that at sixty six fifty six, yeah.
Sixty six.
Sorry, I made a lot of praise, no praise.
That's all right, for what I do, I'm happy.
Okay, election officials are basically in that figure, and I, I've asked Samara and I, I'm sure she did. But when I run an election for the school district, we build a school district. And I'm not so sure that that's what happens here, but in this particular year, because we had so many things going on with absentee ballots and so forth. I use part of that five thousand dollar election grant to offset this. So that's not a, a figure that's gonna be it, so I think uh four hundred dollars is an adequate figure. Assistant treasurer, that's your idea, and the select board clerk, I, I don't know, twenty four, uh twenty four meetings at seventy five dollars comes to thirty six hundred dollars. I don't know where these.
No, it's eighteen hundred.
Thirty six.
Twenty four times seventy five?
No, twenty four times, oh, twenty four times, I don't know, do the math, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred.
Okay. What was I thinking? Twelve?
Well, if, if, especially, he doesn't do special meetings or.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, okay, so, yeah, that's, right, so that's.
Um, did you say the assistant treasurer, we didn't touch on yet, because we said, the treasurer.
Yeah.
Not breaking that down.
I think it would make sense for us to discuss the group entirely when we're.
Animal control, we're spending the five hundred dollars?
Yes.
Yeah.
Would you bar for that? Thank you.
That's the only reason I do it, that money.
The town clerk restoration, so what happens there is two hours a week that Gwen is doing the. Photocopying of the records to put them into digitalization. If we had four, if we had used a couple like CoFile or COT, it would cost us a ton of money. Gwen is down to book twenty-one now, so she, we.
Twenty-two.
Okay, twenty-two, so two, uh, we have four, we're up to book forty-two now.
Yeah, forty-two books.
I started at forty-two and I'm down to twenty-one.
Oh, right.
So we've got twenty-five, thirty years digitized already, which we're only spending two hours a week, I mean, Gwen is doing it, it's kind of a.
What takes so long is you have to, you have to input everything as a new record. Before I can copy, before I can download it into the system, so I have to input all the information before I can even scan it in. And that's what takes so long.
And, and is there, did we hear that there's a, another program for this that maybe? This could be.
Well, they could be part of AA, the grant, yes.
Our, A, A, or, okay, A, A.
A, O, P, right, no, that, that, our money can be, but again, you know.
Yes, that's, right now, we need to budget what we have, so we, we decide that, okay, thank you.
So, so sixteen sixty-four is two hours a week at sixteen dollars an hour. And I think that's a reasonable thing, uh, it's.
So assistant town clerk, restorations?
You've got to have the twelve hundred.
Yeah, I've got it at sixteen sixty-four because it's two hours a week at the new rate of sixteen dollars because last year you got raised.
I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I guess, a lot of praise, I gave originally, anyway, so sixteen sixty-four. Uh, is the figure that it's when you, you better check my math again, I take it.
Um. It's okay, I guess I'm just, I mean, we would have. We would have factored the rate into this last year also, with the twelve hundred, because we had decided it at that point.
The animal control?
So.
Yes.
I'm not sure why, why we're increasing it.
Well, it's two hours a week.
Right.
At sixteen dollars an hour, but you better do my math, because I, I guess I screwed up, that two hours a week.
Sixteen, yes.
Thirty-two times, uh, fifty-two.
Uh, yeah, I guess I'm just saying that we, we had the new rates last year and we budgeted twelve hundred.
Uh, so what are we budgeting?
And we're through four months, we're at four sixteen.
Again, some of these, I'm curious to.
Times three would be slightly over twelve hundred.
So I don't know, um.
Shall we, uh, look at fifteen hundred or?
No, it's sixteen sixty-four, it's two hours a week.
Okay, two hours.
And it's sixteen dollars an hour, and what does that come out to?
Sixteen sixty-four. We can math it.
Okay.
So, um, July, August, September, October, four months, it's sixteen hundred. Yep, that's what it would be, or sixteen times four is sixteen sixty-four.
Wait, you could all take it from there. No, that's, it would be four sixteen times three, because it's four months.
That's, yeah.
July, August, September, October, oh, you're right, you're right.
Here is twelve months, not sixteen months, so it would actually be, it would be twelve forty-eight.
Well, again, I'm, I'm curious, there's been some things that are not showing up in the payroll that, uh, there's. I don't know if they're taking that money, you know, I, when Samara was here, she knew to take that two hours that we put on the payroll. And put that as records restoration, I think possibly they had been including it in Gwen's payroll as part of her annual payroll. I mean, do you underst- you understand what I'm saying? She, she gets eight hours a week working for the town, then she gets an additional two hours a week to do this. But that two hours was supposed to be a separate entity on a paycheck, I'm not sure it always went in there, it could go into the other thing for.
In the bind, yeah.
Yeah.
So technically, then you're saying, if there is two hours a week, or fifty-two weeks, sixteen dollars an hour, it should be.
Sixteen sixty-four. Okay, we let's increase it to sixteen sixty-four.
Okay, room commissioner, let's just stipend to five hundred. Payroll taxes, um, um, is this like an average?
Yeah, well, it'll, yeah, it's predicated on all the other numbers, so until we figure out the treasurer.
Leave that.
Nowhere, we won't really be able to figure that out, it'll go up.
As something like payroll service fees, or is that something that's a consistent?
No, that's, that's not existent, it's not, uh, that's dynamic, it changes every time we do, you know.
So not budgeted right this moment?
Not at this point, uh.
Supplies and postage, uh, forty-five hundred dollars?
Well, we've, I don't think we've ever, well, what I'll say is, we've always historically, or at least in recent years, budgeted twelve hundred for it.
For, uh.
Payroll, for payroll service fees.
Oh.
I mean, whether those might fluctuate because the payroll, because we've switched payroll companies multiple times in recent years. But I guess what I'll say is, we've never been more than a few hundred.
Well, I'm looking at the actual for last year, which was fifteen nineteen. And I wonder why there was that, we got six thirty, times three would be eighteen hundred dollars, correct?
Eighteen ninety, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, again.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like the, in twenty. In FY twenty twenty, we were a hundred and something bucks. Over. Like you said, last year, we were three hundred bucks over. And maybe we make it. Eighteen hundred instead of twelve hundred?
Yeah, it's not eighteen hundred, I think.
I'm just saying, that's not a number that we can realistically figure out.
So it changes.
So we do have to, we do have to, but it's going up, certainly, it seems, so.
Well, it's a guess. Yeah.
Right.
Alright, so that's payroll services, eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred.
Supplies and postage?
Uh, okay, supplies and postage, now, we know we've had a big bump in postage. And, um, this year, I believe, um, our computers are getting old. They're nine years old, so I'm starting to consider, you know, what, I'm, I'm shopping around. Uh, to see what I can get for the best deal, price of computers have dropped dramatically for desktops. But I, I can see at least two that have to be replaced, we should, and with the forty-five hundred dollars is okay, but, um. Normally, I've, I've been really careful about buying supplies, I, I shop at, you know, uh, P, uh, Walmart and so forth. So I think that I'm gonna be closer to that forty-five hundred, what I'm afraid of is, I don't mind you to diminish to forty-five hundred, I want it to stay. The same, so that would be, be able to get these additional machines.
That makes sense.
So leave it at forty-five hundred?
Right.
That would, yeah, does that, yeah.
Town record expenses, town report expenses. Um.
Um.
That's David's.
Yeah, that's David's. Yeah.
Five hundred and six. Um, yeah, although full disclosure, it's probably the last year I'm doing it, so. Um, but.
Maybe we can do a digital thing.
What's that?
Maybe we can be doing a, can you do a digital, uh, uh, I mean, we, we put it on a website. Uh, you know, do we have to mail all these things out, uh, you know?
I don't know, I mean, that's a question for VLCT, I mean, I think the last time we looked into it. I think there was the impression that we probably still had to produce something physically. We don't necessarily have to.
Do as much.
Do as many of them.
Right, that's what Samara said.
Uh, yeah. Uh, yeah, and I mean, this cost is entirely reprinting the mail-in, I will remind people, I don't charge the town anything for putting it together. Or for the software that I pay for to do it.
Well, that's entirely.
But, um. I think it'll probably go up, I asked a guy to get me a quote, actually, he emailed me the other day, probably to. So my, my assumption is, because everything is more expensive, paper is almost certainly more expensive than it was a year ago.
If you could find.
Trucking and things like that, and machinery are all probably more expensive, we probably wanna say eight hundred bucks. Although I guess this is, this is gonna be for me for a year from now, who knows when it'll be then, but it won't be whatever, it'll be somewhere in that.
Let's budget a thou- let's, let's budget a thousand dollars for a year from now, because if David's not gonna be able to do it, we may be having to hire someone to, to do this.
Yeah, I mean, the printer would.
Do most of it. Alright, I'm gonna put then, I'd like to budget a thousand dollars for the town report, if it's, if we're over budgeted, then we can. refund it. Whatever, treat them before, planning commission expenses, now, planning commission needs to become active, especially with the ARPA, they're gonna be involved in more things. We're gonna have to do some mailings and some meetings and some brainstorming sessions and community, uh, community involvement. I think that they're gonna need to have, uh, uh.
Was there a grant available for that?
There is, a dining grant, yeah.
From, from. Yeah.
I don't recall, it's like, you know, twelve hundred or twenty-two hundred or something.
Yeah, I thought there was a, an opportunity for a grant for that.
There's a, um, I mean, if my math is correct, in twenty. Twenty-three, it'll have to be the town.
Town plan?
To town plan rather, which.
Takes some time.
Is. Will be part of this budget.
Right, so that's what I'm, I'm suggesting, without, without.
So, yeah, so lots of reasons it should probably, I'm trying to go back to figure out what we budgeted back in the time when they did a town plan previously. Um, I don't think I have. I can probably pull something out of my mind, don't go, the, the ones I have don't go back that far. For what we budgeted for them, but.
Yeah.
I've got a copy of the past plan, the data was produced, and I, and I have most of the town reports.
We have town report in the closet right there, so, every, last.
Yeah, part, ten to fifteen years.
Um, so the, so you're seeking a little, but again, I'm, I'm thinking of the, the old newspaper.
It also underestimates.
Five hundred dollars, sixteen hundred.
I was thinking a thousand, because it's, it's, we're looking for the year of the town plan. Being produced, and advertising, we have to run it.
Yeah, they're gonna have to start being a little more frequently than.
Right, you're gonna have to have advertisements, newspaper, surveys, and things like that, I'd like to budget a thousand dollars for planning commission.
Surveys.
Yeah.
Election grant, um, twenty-twenty spend, that's zero.
That's gonna be zero.
That's zero, that again, abatements, um, do we put into, we, we, I'm going to put two thousand dollars reserved for abate, tax abatement, um.
We did, we did before, and I don't know if we utilized any of it, um.
Yeah, it's down, well, yeah, we have utilized, and I think we have. Couple thousand dollars, I think, like, we put two thousand dollars into abatement, a while back, and then there was the cuts.
Right, right.
Abatement on their classes.
But, but we used it that year, we only budgeted that one particular year for the abatement, and. That was used, we, actually, we budgeted for the year after the, the fact. So happened in December, we budgeted the next year, but we gave, we took their property and diminished it by the loss of the building and so forth.
Okay. So, so you think this five hundred dollars that was done?
I think it's, you know, I, um, the five hundred dollars, I think is fair, there's two, there's, uh, there's one or two. Tax problems with, um, delinquencies that, you know, I, I don't know how to address it this year. I had to really walk on, on, walk easily, because with the COVID, there were certain things you couldn't do, you couldn't do, and. And the two people, the one, well, the two people that, uh, that are really troubling me, one has some valid. You know, concerns, uh, they, a whole bunch of things, if they don't ask, we cannot, you know, we cannot go up. And I sent it in a letter saying that you have an opportunity to ask for an abatement, you can do this, but if they don't ask, I can't, I can't make it out of it. Uh, you know, and some people are, you know, maybe they're embarrassed or whatever, but, which comes to shove, you know, the town has to collect the money. No one wants to pay someone else's taxes, but if we can abate them and do it legally and so forth, you know, that's a one-time shot until things get better for them.
So is this a sufficient amount?
I think, yeah, I think, yeah, because I, I don't, I, I don't think the town should get into the fact that everybody, so. There's a lot of people who are struggling with taxes and debt are unfortunate things that we have to take care of.
That's right.
And, um. You know.
Alright, then we'll move on to legal notices, and that's just the newspaper advertisement, um, I, six hundred dollars has been in the past, it looks like it went over one year, but, um. Is this sufficient, I think, at this time?
Um, I don't know, you, you, you see the, yeah, the only thing we've been there are, are.
Works here, via the.
RFPs.
The RFPs, yeah.
And, and we try to shorten them up by saying, please see the website, to save some money on that, so let, let's do the six hundred dollars again.
Exactly. That works. Because they're just showing seventy-two dollars and ten cents.
That was for the, the, the electrician, that was a regular advantage for the electrician, RFP.
But I know. But there was more than seventy-one dollars.
Yeah, there, that, that can't be.
No, it's not regular, yeah.
So there's, we, we have the. You put out the RFP for the sand, yeah.
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 Yeah, there's a number of.
And honestly, one of them is two hundred bucks.
Exactly. So there's a couple of, this is probably, yeah, right, they're being put in a wrong account or something, I'm not sure.
You mean for this, the seventy-two ten is, you're saying that.
That number's not correct.
Okay, it's two.
Doesn't seem like it. Unless they're putting it, they're putting it somewhere else, and, you know, the auditors will find it, I guess, at some point.
Okay, thank you. Alright, uh, seminars, I don't think we're having enough, uh, many of the seminars are now being, uh, webinars, and. Unless it's, um, someone has a fee of forty-eight dollars or something like that.
And we're a member of, uh, VLCT, so we get a very reduced rate, and, you know, a lot of us are seasoned, so it doesn't. You know, we're not really looking at it, whereas a new team would say, hey, I wanna go, we don't wanna do that, but, um, they're in.
I'd like to, I mean, I'd like to reduce this down to.
Yeah, I do, right, people are not gonna have physical seminars.
Yeah.
Ever again.
No, it's all gonna be virtual.
That's just never gonna happen.
I was thinking about reducing this down to three hundred dollars.
I mean, if we ever, I'm just looking back to see what, like, what's the most in recent years, it would be.
I think they're, you know, they're forty-eight dollars sometimes.
Yeah.
Um. Um, in FY twenty, we spent eleven hundred dollars on.
Well, part of that was the listeners going to a number of seminars, uh, that were important at that time. Um, I, I remember that.
But like you say, even if people do a bunch, they're all gonna be. Things on VLCT webinars that are maybe forty bucks a pop or whatever.
Forty bucks. Correct, yeah.
So, sorry, you said three hundred?
I said three hundred.
That makes sense.
Mileage and travel, um. I don't know, I think you should have something in there, maybe a hundred dollars for, for mileage and travel, because it's, that would cover several hundred miles of, of.
Yeah.
People going to seminars, so I put, uh, two, uh, what do I need to say?
Hundred dollars.
One hundred dollars. Town office electric, I know it's gonna go up, is there anything to be, you know?
Uh, well, for the, that's another reason it will go up, because now we have AC. And we are using that during the summer, and that does require a little more electricity.
And I have to say that ARPA will allow us to do other things that might enhance the living, the environment here in town hall, that will make the power, power good, so, um.
But by the same token, a kilowatt hour rating has increased already, so I know that, um, even though it's, uh, you know, a little less than a penny, but. It all, it all adds up.
But she put you at eleven hundred dollars, and it's actually.
So we got four nineteen, if we do that three times, it's twelve hundred dollars.
We're already on pace for thirteen hundred.
Yeah, thirteen hundred, I think, would be.
Okay, so one thousand three hundred dollars for town office electric.
Well, I was gonna say, I think we should go to fifteen hundred.
Yeah, I think so.
Because you think about it, the things you're talking about, we, we haven't had. You know, we haven't had an AC here for an entire, some, not even remotely.
Right. I thought they.
And just, and, yeah, I, I think it's realistically, I would go with fifteen hundred.
Okay, that's fair enough, for Klein Church, um.
Is, is that part of the bond, this is something that we, in the.
This, we, we pay this in our general budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's always been that, I mean, I've, I think every, here we have this discussion about whether.
So we got sixty-eight ninety times three, it's two ten right there.
So, um, two fifty, or maybe we should stay at three hundred, let's stay at three hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if anything, you know, that place is gonna be used more.
Might wanna increase that one, too. I think so, because they're getting up to where.
Although, when I heat it requires, uh, electricity too. Oh, and the renite requires uh electricity too, they didn't have that in the past.
Not much. Not much, yeah, that, yeah, exactly, that's not.
But but let's leave it at three hundred and if this is something that we need to uh look at the following year and we'll see how it goes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, town office telephone. Uh, seventeen fifty.
No, that's a reasonable price.
I have a question.
Yes, yeah.
Did, were you, you. I know he said something about a problem sometimes when there's only one line any year.
Oh, yeah, we can certainly do that too.
Is that something you wanna make? In other words, have two lines rather than just one, because you said there's sometimes a problem when there's only one line.
Well, there there is a.
Well, there is two lines, we have an emergency line.
Yeah, well, no, the line.
That's an emergency.
We have a line that we use for the.
Fax.
Alarm system and we have a line that we have for the fax system, but as far as talking, we have the one private line, which is a landline. Which we used, we installed a couple of years ago, in the event we lost the internet and electricity, most of the time landlines always stood up, you know, they didn't go down too fast. We still have it, so we do have two lineups here, basically, um, I would like to speak to, uh, what's his name, Marty, uh, what's Marty, Marty Grimes. Who has Southern Vermont Telephone, and he sets up a lot of these places with two or three lines so that. The treasurers could have a mailbox, the listers could have a mailbox, so that, um, when someone wants to speak to someone in the lister's department.
They press one one one, or they press two two two, like like a Wyndham Regional.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
Wyndham for.
Uh, I mean, you know. This has worked for a lot of years, but it's it's getting old now, because things are changing, uh, you know, more activity, more things going on. Um, I think it would be advantageous for the town to have a line for the cert, for the treasurer and a line for the listers and a town quarter separate line. Um, and I think it can be done, I don't know what the cost might be, but I could have Marty Grimes come in and give us an estimate of what he thinks it might cost and. You know, it it's a, it's a big job.
And an update on the phones, that we have to be, but they're getting a little.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, everything, you know, has a lifespan, but the bottom line is the convenience, so that people are getting the right phone calls, because. Somar would call VLCT and two days later, VLCT would leave a voicemail on this line by, it's, you know.
Well, a couple of times I have picked up the phone, somebody's been on the phone and I didn't realize they were on the phone.
And. Yeah. Yeah, so that, I mean, that's, I I just think it's something we could go, so anyway, getting back to the.
Okay, I didn't.
The telephone, um.
So you wanna leave, wanna leave it, you open and um, it might you have an answer we can.
Yeah, and then we might be able to use some of that that money for that grant that you're talking about, the, you know, the Uncle Joe Grant. Uh, some of that could be useful.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, so, um.
So seventeen fifty, I think, uh, you could say at this point.
Seventeen fifty?
Yeah, I wish it was in there.
Yeah, that's.
Alright, town office fuel, can we talk, this is um, heating fuel?
Yes.
And stalling up.
Okay, but we've always, we've always been a little higher than usual, I mean, we've always uh funded.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Budgeted for, okay, so.
Uh, so, uh, you know.
We're delivering.
Maybe twenty seven hundred, maybe, I I don't know, I just had fuel delivered today at three twenty five.
I know, that's not what I paid, what I paid about three, four weeks ago.
Really?
So, and it's not getting lower.
No, it won't get lower for a while, then it'll go down, but not.
And using the office more frequently for meetings and so forth, uh, I try to, you know, cut through Thursday.
So three thousand maybe instead of twenty five hundred?
Or leave it twenty five hundred, because.
I mean, we've, for what it's worth, we've.
Always up at around fifteen hundred?
Yeah, seventeen, a couple of years ago was seventeen forty four.
So twenty five should give us.
Twenty five might have enough buffer in it for a little bit longer anyway.
Based upon what we've seen.
Based upon the way it's.
Computer service and maintenance, um.
Uh, that's Dan Neal, that's uh, basically, we now have a laptop that we include that's part of the program there. Eight hundred dollars, I think, a year for all the security, all the support, everything else, it's uh, well spent money.
We budgeted way too low last year.
Uh, so, uh, computer services at nine hundred is is probably a wrong, it's the number, sixteen hundred was because we missed the year. Or wasn't billed in the right year, but it runs, I think, uh, twelve hundred dollars for for the uh, for all the equipment that we have.
So one thousand two hundred.
So a hundred.
Dollars, alright, fire alarm, um, program fire alarm, that has that gone up?
Uh.
What what is this, eight hundred dollars versus five hundred budgeted?
I know.
Did we have to buy new fire extinguishers?
No, basically, they come in, they come in and they inspect the the facility, you know, all the alarm, they do the test. And then they have to put a stamp on it and that goes to state, it's a certain amount of work and.
But that's.
So we just did, we just had this done for three hundred and seventy eight dollars.
Right.
Right, we just came in.
That was the school, you're talking town office.
Right. Now, this is the town office, right? So, um.
But he does all three, he does the, he does.
Okay.
So having a five hundred is okay, because you're saying the billing overlapped it uh in the previous year, that's why it's eight hundred and sixty. So five hundred.
Well, we have three eighty seven or whatever for the school.
Yeah.
That's like a three eighty seven a year.
Yeah, I think seven hundred, seven hundred fifty dollars.
Seven fifty or something like that, I have a feeling in some prior years. We were, we were okay with five hundred, I think in part because remember there was a long period of time where it was really hard to get him to come do it.
Exactly.
Right.
So I think we went. Probably, you know, we went longer periods than we would have liked without.
Now, do we pay for the school stuff?
To do the stuff, which is why it was so.
Alright, so.
I said before, isn't the cash available?
Yeah.
And doesn't mean inspect, isn't there a fire extinguisher at church too?
But it comes out of the.
Yes, right, yeah, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't, no, that was all, that was all school.
That was the four five dollars, wasn't it? I think so. That was the daycare?
It was all daycare.
Okay.
There were two bills, the first one came through forty five dollars and the three.
Right, but he, I, we don't have a.
That was just a charge in.
Right.
I think, the yellow was the inspection, do I have that right?
Right. Right.
The way you explained it, so you're looking.
He has forty five dollars to charge the bugs.
I'm sorry.
You're looking at a grant total of four hundred dollars just for the school, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
And four hundred for us.
Well, this is.
But that's not here.
No, but that, you can take that number and double it and put it, you know, put the talent in there too.
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused, the fire.
This, this budget line item does not include the charges for the school for this.
Okay.
Right, we just paid.
That comes out of it, out of the school account.
There, okay, so.
That comes out of school account.
But I think Guy's point is, and stands that we can use that as informative to what it is actually gonna cost annually for this building.
I think it's seven fifty. Okay.
And.
That's more for.
So seven fifty.
Yeah. So I think.
That's more, it was a little over four hundred in the school.
Oh, I thought you said it was three sixty eight.
Well.
Right, although what I'll say is it's a much, it it's a facility that has a, a lot more.
Higher.
Actually, fire extinguishers, when this, that building is probably.
So.
Overall similar to all the other buildings from.
By.
So we don't need to go to seven fifty, keep it at five hundred?
Yes.
Yeah, I would think, why are we?
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess it it's a little hard to know, I mean, I understand your point about what just happened, looking back. Yeah, I don't know, I mean, last year.
Well, the problem with the code three is they're not.
Last year, this line item was eight sixty, now whether. Some of that might have been school stuff that didn't get taken out of it, we don't.
Well, some of it, like I said, code three is not consistent, you'll see him for a year, then you won't see him for twelve or fourteen months, then it's, you know, then it's eight months, yeah, it's.
Right. Yeah, it's, again, we're only talking about a couple hundred, but if we wanted to keep it at five hundred.
Yeah.
Well, if we're a little over, it's not going to, it's not gonna be, again, we're not gonna be a, we're not gonna be a thousand dollars over, we're gonna be a few hundred dollars over.
Alright. Okay, alright, so five hundred dollars for that, now legal services, I think it's important to maintain.
Yeah.
Uh, money to, just in the worst case scenario and uh, you don't spend the debts becoming appropriate.
Yeah.
Sure thing. It's probably part of the seven hundred, but that we're over, isn't it?
Yeah, it ends up being a big chunk of surplus every year when there's a surplus.
Rescue services, rescue services, so they're not gonna be, they're they're gonna not change the rate for the first year of our three year contract coming up.
You gotta have it in there.
And they'll be one percent on the second, the third year of the three year contract, so I think rescue.
One percent.
So the, so for this.
Is it one percent for this year or this year?
It's zero for the, when I went to the meeting and.
For the coming fiscal, so for this one.
For the up, next upcoming contract, zero percent increase.
Okay.
So, so we can stay with the fifteen four eighty two.
Right, let's leave, yeah, fifteen five, how about you wanna do or? Fifteen thousand five hundred, one thousand, fifteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Sure.
Um, fire department services.
We've always given nine thousand dollars to wash the bridge.
I thought it was a thousand dollars to wash the bridge.
No, it's nine thousand dollars we give them. Yeah, we've done it for years, it's basically a donation, uh, but they.
Yes.
Wash the bridge.
And then the other one is the fire department mutual aid, which, you know, we've all agreed that, uh, you know, they were biting off more than they could chew and. The the rates have gone so high.
So ten thousand four hundred?
Uh, right, that's.
Makes round that one.
Well, what I'll say about that is we do usually get informed, if nothing else, Harry LaVornia. Usually gives us a heads up on.
Increases?
What they're gonna be, what to.
Increases.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Although, although he's not. He's he's not really active anymore.
So, you're gonna go ten five?
I mean, it has increased year to year.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Although it's been high consistent, so we could probably estimate based on that. Cent percent.
So ten six?
So.
If ten five would be right, let's write on, you know, thirty dollars.
Yeah, I mean, in FY twenty, it would. Actually ended up being ten. Yeah.
Ten dollars.
Eleven hundred?
So what, what, what are we doing?
Fire department mutual aid, but I'm just, um, uh, I I have down here ten thousand five hundred.
Yes.
Yeah, they will eventually inform us.
Yeah.
Right.
It may not be for a month or two, but they will tell us.
Okay, so.
I would suggest for the moment, we just assume. That it's going up, now that it's going up to.
The same. To eleven?
Ten seven fifty.
Alright. And so. Uh, copies.
Zero. Uh, basically, that's, we get twelve thousand copies uh. A month and uh, at the end of the year, we double it up and if it's less than twelve thousand, we don't do anything, if it's more, it's nine cents or point oh nine per copy, but. We've never exceeded it.
Right.
And I keep an eye on it.
How do your contract, um?
Okay, that uh, that's gonna be reduced because I'm in negotiations with uh, Simwest, uh, we're paying a hundred and twenty five and change per month. Uh, which includes the maintenance, the toner and service calls and everything else, the new contract will be a hundred and five dollars. And um, I'm pretty solid on that, so if we multiply that by.
Twelve.
Twelve, it comes to twelve hundred and sixty dollars a year. So that'll be, you know, a couple of dollars less, but in today's world where you can get things to go down, that's a free thing.
Hard to argue that.
One thousand two hundred and sixty dollars for coffee.
Two hundred and sixty, yeah.
Town property maintenance.
Um, I don't know what's included with that.
So town property maintenance would be, uh, the.
Is that Tanner?
That would be mowing, it would be. Move made.
So Blooming doing the uh cemeteries and stuff, or is Blooming the baseball field?
Uh. Town property would be the baseball field, um.
The town office.
It's a town office. Uh, Brown's Schoolhouse, we don't, is anybody in the church?
Yeah, Tanner was.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Peter Meyer was doing.
Yes, he does, but what if he doesn't do it, we never pay for it, in two years, he may not be doing it.
Should be.
Right, right, right. Right.
What's that?
The mowing around the church, but just saying, we're we're trying to identify what is town, town maintenance, um. Replacing lights, isn't that town maintenance, the lighting systems and things like that?
Even.
No, I replace them.
No, I'm the motion detector, what we, what, the electrician is coming in, isn't that town maintenance?
Right. Uh, no, that's a one time, that'd be a one time expense, um.
Has now moved over. Okay, alright.
No, that wouldn't, no, I think town maintenance is, for what we had it for, was the mowing of the baseball field, the town office around schoolhouse. And the cemeteries, I think that was a separate entity.
Yes.
For a solid reason.
Well, and somebody else did the church.
Right.
Yeah, Peter Meyer goes there.
Well, because you budgeted for twelve hundred and you spent twenty five and then you budgeted for twelve hundred. And and right now, we're at thirty two sixty eight in four months.
At thirty two.
I think. Does someone go and do the cemeteries once or twice a year, four times a year?
That's ten, that would be, that's, that has its own line item.
Yeah, I know at the bottom of the page.
Some, yeah, I mean, maybe.
So that's more. Oh, excuse me, the cemetery, we did, they did spend the Riverside Cemetery, but it should come out of Riverside Cemetery's account. Money to trim the trees around the fence line, that was done last summer.
Right. But what about the four owned cemeteries?
That's, that's the, that's the two thousand dollars.
Okay, that's that, two thousand for the ancient cemeteries, it would be interesting at some point to know what this thirty two sixty eight is.
Well, I'm wondering if it's the uh, the mouse removal, mouse work, it was uh.
No, we charged that to the uh, eight hundred dollars to the grant, election grant.
Eight hundred bucks.
Wasn't, didn't come out of town maintenance.
Oh.
Thirty two, what did we do, uh?
Huh.
Could have been, I, I don't know, unless there's something put in the wrong.
Yeah, I mean, maybe there's some, maybe there, maybe some of the.
There's, there are some.
Several houses grant expenses got put into.
Hundred twenty five dollars for the pest inspection around school grounds.
They just haven't been. Anyway.
Was that in, was that?
I mean, clearly twelve hundred isn't enough.
No.
Because the last several years, we've been over on that considerably, I mean, just. I mean, probably just the mowing that Tanner now does alone probably takes us over that.
Alright, so, um, I would like to know what the actual breakdown is now, and send us to treasury, uh, ask them to print out that.
Yeah.
And uh, meanwhile, so we say, um, three thousand? There's an error in here somehow.
Yeah, there's an error in there somewhere, but oh, we did something that we don't recall, uh, and I. Nothing that we did.
Two thousand, because.
I say we go with twenty five hundred.
Alright, twenty five hundred, I think there's some errors, I I agree, I think.
I mean, I, I think the three thousand, I think, it's only four months here, so I mean.
Maybe. Something's up there.
Something's gotta be up there, but last year, the twenty four ninety five.
Okay, two thousand five hundred.
I'm gonna assume for the moment was maybe accurate, yeah, that's kind of accurate.
Alright, so uh, two thousand five hundred for town property, now town trash removal. That was five hundred dollars that we put for the, that that town trash removal or was that recycling center cleanup?
Well, that was, that was what we had originally put for that guy Jutris to go up and take all the stuff around these.
And take up things when we leave things.
At fifty dollars a month.
Cause sometimes people leave things on the side of the road and he would come and pick them up.
Yeah.
I think we could actually delete that or or archive that particular, it's not funded and, um. Because, yeah, I think we're not gonna fund that and if we, Marcus said that he would help with picking up things, he would need to.
Yeah, it's to be part of his.
Yeah.
So I'm not gonna fund that line item, town trash removal.
Yeah. Thanks.
Well, I don't know that I agree with that though, because.
Surely. It's not the same as, if we go to Wyndham, we recycle, if we take trash to Wyndham, do we buy a forty dollar a year sticker?
We don't.
Oh, no, I ha, I've never seen any billing for that, but it doesn't mean we couldn't do that.
Right, you should could, I think you should.
I think you should leave it in there because. What about green up day?
Well, I guess I'm just saying, if if.
We have a source.
The the progress on this is for somebody to lead stuff, well, like we just talked about the other day, that out by Wendy Hill.
Yeah, yeah.
The person has the, I mean, I understand we're gonna have Mark do that, and and I know in reality. Tracking it all this way may not happen, but. I don't really, that, the, Mark's time for doing that really shouldn't be coming out of a highway budget.
Yeah.
It should be coming out of this.
Right.
I know realistically, all of the things that have to get put together so that to get accurately done might not happen, but.
So if we left that there and had him, when he submits his payroll and what he's done, saying this is associated with trash.
Trash removal.
In a, in a perfect world, yes.
Yeah, that would be.
Well, let's try to become perfect, well, we'll, we'll, we'll shoot for that, talk to Mark when he does.
Yeah. Because the reality is there is, I mean, we haven't used it a lot, I mean, the intention, like I says, the intention was to have him, that guy doing it on a regular basis.
Yeah.
And then that sort of fell by the wayside, but that doesn't mean the problem doesn't still exist.
Can you really?
Right.
And the need to budget something for it still exists.
It's more. When we clicked out the rat, run schoolhouse and I had to go with a dump, that was my.
Right, yeah, that, it got used, right, and that's probably what the seventy eight.
That's probably.
Where, where does the money for green up day come out, what account?
Loss is probably from that.
That green up day comes from what?
Was that an appropriation for, did we do a?
Well, I remember we had a discussion about it, we didn't remember where it came out, I mean, what if this might be.
Green up day. Green up day, did we mention that? Greenup day did greenup stay out?
No, I mean, honestly, that ends up coming out of, quite frankly, that that probably ends up coming out of some highway thing. I mean, because it ends up being marked in, or it ends up I have never seen one of those bills. It ends up costing us a hundred or two hundred bucks, hundred or two hundred bucks, it probably ends up getting
I think it built a. A hundred or two hundred bucks.
I don't know, or it ends up going into landfill fees possibly.
Ah.
Maybe, it might, it might end up going there.
All right, so let's do five, let's keep the five hundred, um, and this is something that we might need to talk to, uh, our, uh, talk about how we're gonna handle this, this particular item in the future. All right, five hundred, uh, my VLCT dues, is that changing?
Uh.
On the eighteen hundred or?
I don't, to be honest with you, I haven't seen anything and I haven't, they haven't mentioned anything about increases, but every time I turn around, everybody's increasing things by one or two percent, um, so I don't.
Yeah.
I'm I'm careful, that's your reason.
Eighteen hundred?
Eighteen hundred, I think.
Eighteen hundred dollars, this is an estimate for those dues. Uh, and the regional dues?
Uh, that will go up, uh, I'm sure.
Looks like, um, fifteen hundred maybe, should we put in?
Um. Hmm, no, I would say fourteen hundred would be more than.
Appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah, fourteen hundred dollars, all right, and then we.
I mean, the thing that's worth noting is that, um, for those of you that weren't involved in the budget cycle last year, a number of organizations, including Wyndham Regional um, and including Newbrook uh, specifically did not increase their
Doing for the COVID risks.
tasks last year.
Right.
They've. They've COVID, so some of these people have gone multiple years now without doing any increase, so.
Expect it to come down the road.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's likely that it will be, but because they held the line for longer than they probably intended to.
Yeah, it was.
All right, very good.
So sorry, what did we decide on?
Uh, fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred, thank you, so.
Member licenses support?
Fifty-one fifty?
Fifty-one fifty?
But then.
Oh, I don't know, it must be eight forty, I'm sorry.
Maybe our seven eighty, seven eighty plus.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, fifty-one fifty plus eight forty.
Eight forty.
Seven machines at
I am now, we fifteen.
ten dollars a piece, seven users, I'm sorry, seven users.
So fifty-nine ninety, let's just go six thousand?
Yeah.
Six thousand for member licenses support?
Yeah.
And and again, um, they're gonna waive the setup fee, which is a normal fee to they, you know, to to do this, and again, I I'm running it past you folks. Uh, I don't wanna make the ultimate decision, but for for all practical purposes, I I really believe that going to the cloud is the way to go.
Absolutely, we need to.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's the way.
Yeah, it's it's crazy, the number of things that listers and treasurers and up and all have to do
Everyone.
that they have to physically come into this office.
Yeah, they also do not necessarily.
I'm using login dot com, which costs twenty fifty dollars, which allows us to, I I use it from at for my home and I've let the treasurer be the other person to use it so that you can literally do everything at home that you do in your office.
What's the software called?
Call login dot com.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, yes.
And uh, it works, it's excellent, it's the perfect program, but I still think that we need to have this cloud because
Sure.
it's just the way things are going right now and it's just.
Not a problem.
So what'd you say, I'm sorry?
Six.
Six thousand. So before we jump off of that though, I do wanna bring up, we have the whole additional expense of the mapping stuff, which.
That that will go into the network, that would go into the listers, again, we haven't decided what you wanted to do with, because
We have.
the mapping is is not in there, uh, license and support.
Okay. Okay, so are we thinking we build that into the sixty-five hundred dollars that we budgeted for?
Or you were gonna do a separate line item for?
Right, well, so that's why I bring it up, that's why I'm asking, how are we gonna do that?
Yeah, that uh.
So that's another eight fifty plus four fifty.
Yep.
So that's thirteen hundred dollars.
That would go into, where do you wanna put that fund, how do you wanna?
I I mean, personally, I don't think it should go under listers, I think that should be the salary for the listers.
Right, yeah.
Right.
We don't, we don't build in you know, we don't build in your computer costs to your salaries.
That's also. Right. No, no, I.
So this should be under, this back should be under, um?
A separate line item. Probably a new line item.
Y'all.
Software, lister software. Well, but to your point, it's not exclusively stuff that only the listers are gonna.
Well, they would use it ninety percent of the time.
What is the software for?
It's for mapping.
The map.
And it ties in with the state and so away.
Map, state mapping?
Right.
Mapping software.
Mapping software.
Is that, okay, but no, we're also including Apex and Marshall Swift, which are software programs, tools that the uh, listers use, you know about that.
Software tools and programs.
Yeah, right, uh, Stan, Apex and Marshall Swift, you're familiar with that, those are tools that listeners.
Moments of the software that the listeners would use, L X is the drawing program, maybe
Yeah.
Marshall and Swift is utilizing the cost approach, which I think the state puts on heavy assets.
So what are we spending?
And that's the four hundred and fifty dollars, is that so?
No, no, the, the, the eight hundred and fifty is the C T I, which is the mapping program. And then there's an additional four hundred and fifty to go on to that.
For the online version.
Yep.
They update.
Yep, and then Apex is a drawing program software, Marshall and Swift is a, is so, so those are, I have to find out what those fees are cause I don't, there have been some bumps in the fees and they're they're charged to the town and it comes out of, I thought they may have taken it out of the, um, listers when they had a, you know, everything was lumped in his listers.
Years ago, the the uh, both the drawing program and A, uh, Marshall and Swift were a component of the Nimrock software. So that when you went in and did your cost to.
Okay, but now Apex is.
It sounds like it's being separated.
Yes, yes.
So that whoever's providing that needs to provide a separate.
Yeah, so we'll have to find that out and I, you know, I'll look that up and hopefully have those numbers for you at the next meeting, but, uh, I thought the last Apex was uh, twenty-five dollars for that software. Cam, I don't know what the hell that is, um. I I'll find out, I I'm.
I'm sorry, Marshall and shit, Swift should be below five hundred.
Oh, yeah.
Apex would probably be in the three hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're gonna leave that open, starts with your software.
Yeah, I'll find out what those costs are and be able to give me, Quin, did you just? Uh, check Apex and uh, Marshall Swift in comma which is a consumer, I'm sorry, computer assisted mass appraisal program for the listeners.
Okay, and then we're gonna create a new line item and okay, I guess we might have to decide what we wanna call it, which is maybe it's just lister software.
Yep.
So lift lifting software versus mapping software and tools?
Swift.
A lot, why not? Or would it be soc- just software because?
I don't care.
Well, yeah, yeah, I think, again, you have to think about what is someone gonna read when they see that?
Draw it out.
And we don't know what we're talking about, but what do they?
Yeah. If we can need more, yeah.
Yep.
As long as it's. As long as that's accurate and not.
Yep.
All right, so the new line item, which is for lister software, which might be around thirteen hundred dollars or so, is to be determined after you talk to someone about the Apex and Marshall and Swift.
Yep.
And that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be, it'll be over thirteen hundred, we're at thirteen hundred before maybe some of that.
And then, yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
Well, that was in the Nimrick.
Right, so, which Nimrock right now, he's at six thousand.
Yes.
All right, so we have a to be determined for the next one. All right, landfill fees, now, this has to do with
The costing of the. That's for the the hazardous duty, hazardous waste here, pick up the.
What we still pay solid waste.
Yeah, how does that work, is it membership challenge paid out?
Yeah, all member towns pay it based on population, um, the last few years, it has not really changed as I'm no longer the rep, I can't be able to start on to the management.
So that, uh.
At some point, Dan Tower will probably have an idea but it's maybe a little.
So that's seven forty-three ninety-two, is that a a quarterly payment or is that a yearly, uh, we don't know, okay.
Um.
Yeah, I mean, they bill us quarterly, so presumably that's.
Hmm, seventeen forty.
Wait, seventeen forty, yeah, so I'm just saying, that's fifty.
That's a lot.
That's quarterly or?
Well, I mean, I, but depending on the timing, that might be two quarters or something. I think they bill quarterly, or do they bill monthly? I don't know.
So you think four thousand would be sufficient or should we keep it at thirty-five or?
We have. I think we should question that.
We have absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I think we should question that.
Okay.
Maybe get some sort of.
It depends on what they develop for their budget.
Okay, very good. Well, enforcement, I still think we should keep that, that the, what is it, ten hours and ten hours a year?
Ten hours, yeah. Then the sheriff's department has has changed their fee, I think it's forty-eight dollars an hour now for for the policeman and his and his, you know, his uh, automobile and equipment and everything else, so that's going up, there was a letter that was sent out. Uh, I think it's in the, within the selectmen's box.
That's on your reformer.
Yeah. Yeah, and it was in the reformer too, but I think it went up to forty-eight dollars an hour, so you do ten thousand four hundred and eighty dollars.
Oh, I think we, I think this price was based on the state, Vermont state, please, the rate of sixty-eight dollars or something, so, so five hundred.
Oh, well, it.
I think it was, yeah, it was fifty-one an hour, it's where, which is where we got five hundred.
Five hundred ten. Okay. Okay.
Okay.
So what are we doing with that one?
Leave it at five ten, ten hours, fifty one dollars an hour.
Yeah. I mean.
If you need to, that's a certain cost then. Recycling collection.
Now, when you multiply that five thousand, figure five four.
Wait, wait, I lost you on the landfill fees, I feel like we didn't do anything with rate.
Landfill. Right.
That's right.
A lot fortunately.
Five ten.
Five ten.
Correct, recycling collection at twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Well, five thousand, so that's fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars for the year, so we're a little, we're a little below, but it's a hundred and fifty-two dollars for the truck to come, so that's once a week. Then what is the rate, a hundred and ten dollars?
It fluctuates.
Guy. Yeah.
I mean, I haven't seen the detail of payroll lines lately, so I don't.
I I've been carefully on, I called the guys, but.
I mean, it's, it, over the last few years, the rate, the tonnage rate, I think, has fluctuated from
Oh, yeah.
anywhere as low as a hundred and twenty
Yep.
a ton up to a hundred and fifty a ton, although it seemed like it had gone down for a while and was staying down. I don't know if that's, I don't know.
And five thousand dollar figures for a quarter, correct?
I'm sorry, I don't think, I don't think we can consider that accurate whatsoever, because that doesn't even make sense, that would mean
Accurate.
I mean, it would mean, I mean, we're on pace for fifteen thousand dollars, which is.
Three thousand.
Three six order, that's four times.
Last, last year, which.
Twenty thousand.
Yeah.
No.
For a quarter.
No, this is a, this is, this is not a quarter, this is four months.
This is a.
This is four months, yeah, this is supposed to be four, whether it, I, but I don't, yeah.
Life.
And again, I don't know.
It may well be really only three months, which would make.
Okay, but what we're gonna do is a separate article in our budget, like we did last year.
Well, I think we have to get a hard look at the cycle costs and get an accurate exact figure, because this is guesstimating and when you're guesstimating it at twenty thousand, that's a big number.
Yeah, that is, yeah, it is. So we're gonna leave it open. Are we under any requirement to let the citizens decide whether this program will be continued or not?
We do it here, we said it here, it's a separate article.
We did last year, okay.
So this may end up being a none of that.
They said yes by one vote.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
No, no.
No?
No, no.
No, that's one of the. My house was. Last year, was it?
No, it wasn't, last year was fifteen or sixteen. No, it wasn't.
Yeah, it was quite a few.
Okay, I'm just, I get.
Yes, right, the year before.
We know, that's, let me just say this about that, last year, we did Australian ballot
Twenty nineteen.
and we had approximately seventy people that responded to Australian ballot, at town meeting, we have approximately seventy people, yet the numbers were so different.
That's so stupid, so bizarre.
I I, you know, I'm wondering, like, do people, when they do the Australian ballot, say, no one's really watching, so I can really say what I'm gonna think, and whereas in a town setting,
There you go.
Yeah.
oh, if I vote for this or I vote for that, you know?
I know, I, that's true, I think, I think it varies.
Oh.
Yeah, I I agree with that.
It has to be considered, yeah.
All right, let's move on, let's, um, so will we leave recycling over or at this time or?
Yeah. Sir.
Well, we'll have to see what the actual costs are, because I think.
It's just really not a fault in the budget anyway, if we're gonna, if we're gonna have a separate article.
Well, we still have the budget.
But we still have to figure out what we're gonna do.
We still have to do it, so.
Yeah, warning this, yes.
Yep.
All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave this, uh, open right now.
I will also add, just in case this wasn't, people didn't know this, again, for people who weren't part of it. The what we actually sort of, I think, came to as a conclusion when we warned the article for the twenty-seven thousand, was actually twenty-six thousand for the recycling collection and a thousand dollars that we thought we would potentially use for some kind of
Security thing.
monitoring or security of the site, which we have not ended up doing anything with that.
Yeah.
We built in, we built in a thousand dollars explicitly to have some
Remember that, right, yeah.
Ideally, you know.
Ability to do that.
Even if we put in solar powered motion detector lights, I wonder if somebody goes there at ni- at night, like, it, uh, in the winter time, four thirty, it starts, and so both Mark Bills and I were at that, and so that might be something, that's not more than fifty dollars, so, but, all right, so that includes a billed in one thousand dollars for, for additional security.
We'll leave it open.
There, we'll leave it open. Okay, insurance bonds. What is an insurance bond, what do you mean by that? For for the, for the buildings and for the equipment?
Uh, and also for, uh, ensuring that that we're protected against, uh, fraudulent activity and so forth, I think that's what that is, I thought the, I know.
You're bonded agent, you're saying, yeah, okay.
Right, everybody has to be bonded.
Okay, so that's just the.
So like, we all have to be bonded, but it's all under one umbrella with the insurance.
Oh, we're all done in that.
So, um, this insurance, is this also building insurance in here too?
Uh, I, you know, I.
Buildings, uh, maybe not.
I I think.
Yeah, I believe it is.
I I thought it was, but.
It's, so, how about, how about?
I believe it coupled with the line item from the highway because we've historically separated separated them
Yeah.
a little bit arbitrarily, but those collectively, I believe, are our
Insurance program.
overall municipal insurance policy with.
I don't want to get broken out anywhere else.
Passive, yeah. That's what's passive.
So I'm thinking that that, that that insurance needs to go up, because if we do get a piece of a loan, when we get a piece of equipment, we're going to have to insure it. And that's going to be an additional cost in the next few years, so.
The other thing is, we will touch wood, eventually have a newer salt shed at the garage building, which will increase it
Building.
Get value back.
Something.
Yeah.
Yes, so.
Maybe not, but.
Six thousand, I think.
I don't know exactly how we can.
Gauge that, yeah.
Although, so I would say six thousand with the extra five hundred, seeing that we didn't use it all the previous year for some reason, I don't know.
I mean, we, the thing is, is that what's, what has sometimes happened in past years, um, is that the the breakdown between what we, what we put for highway insurance and what we put for insurance in this fund doesn't necessarily always get split the same way, so I think it bounces around a bit from year to year, I'm just trying to see what I'm seeing little actuals.
So what does P through Pacific at VLCT? Can we get numbers from them perhaps?
From passive, we could get, you know, the.
Yeah, I mean, and it does change from year to year, I mean, we, I mean, it at some point, we should be able to get what they're actually gonna charge us. I think what has, what has often happened in the past is we weren't able to get any of those numbers until we had to. So we've kind of, fifty-five hundred is, for this part, has been what we've seen to consistently have done the last few years, we dropped it, it used to be six thousand, but I think we realized we weren't, that that was higher than it needed, needed to be.
Maybe then leave it then, so we're not.
Uh, well, you know what, Quin, can you put, put down a list for me, I just finished a questionnaire that Michael asked me to do, the treasurer in regards to a questionnaire for the insurance community for passive, and, um, I I'm gonna give Amy a call up there and see if she can give me a breakdown of everything that we're paying, because to be honest with you, uh, I don't really know, I'm speculating what it is, so I'd like to have a breakdown for workman's comp, uh, the bonds for, you know, the staff, and also insurance rates for buildings and so forth, they should be able to do, we may have it, but I have no idea where it is, um.
Right.
At some point in the past, I was working with Samara on the evaluation of the buildings.
Yep.
The last time I was on the board, and I think, I I know, I believe she had the breakdown down, or whether she's got a special flyer for it, Right. but even so, that's been several years in the rates of. And I think, I, I know, I believe she had the breakdown down, or whether there's, she's got a special fire port, but even so, that's been several years in the rates of.
Well, we should, I, you know, I think.
We should know.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll wait on that.
So you, could you just, uh, make a note, uh, or hang up with, uh, passive? Hopefully she can, uh, enlighten me.
Okay, um, these, next one, old cemetery lawn maintenance, we, we can, we drop this down, um, I think. Thousand dollars would be suitable, um. For that, is that alright with everybody?
Sounds good, yeah. Off the ground, off the ground.
Yes.
Um, well, actually, before we do that, I guess, one of the reasons that at time, I'll just say, one of the reasons at times that we. Said that we weren't gonna do that was because I thought at some point it had been determined. That we have a statutory responsibility to spend at least five hundred dollars per cemetery.
Five hundred dollars, yep.
So we were keeping it at two thousand, because at some point, I think a few years ago, you, you determined that.
You're right, you're right. I, I was on that. That's right.
Good memory.
Whether anybody would ever, obviously, nobody ever held us, held it to us, because we didn't use the budget this, but.
Right.
If we know that, we probably should continue to budget for it.
Uh, you're absolutely right.
Cause we bought one time of using some of it to put the vents back, that.
Yeah, right, and it, it has been, right, I mean.
Yes, yes. Yes, okay.
I mean, we're seeing it from the back as the, the back.
Alright, I think, thank you for remembering, I was just thinking, trying to finish, but you're right, I mean, there is a stipulation.
So two thousand?
I think there's a stipulation that you found.
Yep.
So the old cemetery lawn maintenance is two thousand?
Yeah.
It's four cemetery, it's associated with that. Okay, next, county tax?
Uh, last year, they were late in getting it to us, and, uh, it went up substantially. Um, I, I would think that, you know, probably sixty-five hundred dollars, I don't know, but it's fifty-four hundred dollars, according to what.
Well, I mean, we were budgeting fifty-four hundred for a couple of years, there was a point, I remember when we were going through it last year, we determined that we had never paid the previous year.
Yeah.
That seemingly we had never been billed for it, I, so, when we started digging into it, we couldn't figure out how much it was, because we hadn't actually been billed for it.
Exactly.
In over a year, so we guessed that maybe it would stay the same, but obviously we were wrong.
And obviously, we paid nothing, or nothing's been posted this year yet, so I'm.
Yeah. Yeah.
You think we should go sixty-five?
Well, two years ago, it was six thousand.
Yeah, I would, I would say, uh, probably sixty-five.
And then what was it? It was sixty-three, sixty, yeah, sixty-five, probably.
Yeah.
Six thousand five hundred. Animal impact expense, that's the amount that we do, Humane Society charges this town, I haven't changed that either.
So that's three hundred dollars for contract with them?
That's what we back. Yeah, three hundred dollars, back TV broadcast fees, that's another thousand dollars.
Still a thousand, uh.
Uh, fire permits.
Uh, that's, so he charges fifty cents for permit, or he gets, the state gives him fifty cents for every permit that he issues, it's just.
Per deal.
And you know, the funny thing, I didn't, I didn't see him this year, cause Monley comes in and says, he has how many permits you have, and.
I was doing a paperwork. Oh, yeah, so.
Fifty dollars, alright, fifty dollars.
Well, there was no burning for an awful long time.
Alright.
Yeah, that's true.
And then, and then for a long time, you couldn't burn anything, because it was raining.
Okay, so now, the next appropriations, yes, the appropriations, I don't think we're gonna be.
So we're sticking with Nancy?
Do you wanna check off the ones we received information from?
No.
Do you have that?
I think we kinda have to do that all together.
Yeah. By the way, I.
We can do it during a meeting.
Yeah.
I received an appropriation request from the Morfrey Library today, uh, asking, you know, what was the, the parameters for that, she's a new person.
Yeah.
And I said to her, I pointed out what it was, it looked like the timeline had expired, but I said, if you got it to as soon as possible. I think under the circumstances, we should, and it's an exception of that. So, just so you know.
Thank you.
No.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so the rest are, the rest here on this page are the, um, appropriations that we're going to not cover tonight, we can get a folder. Probably then during an actual regular select or meeting, then.
Can I ask a question about that? I mean, do you know whether treasures have been gathered or?
We've been asking, yes, and Judy now is sending me emails saying I put it in.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, cool, great, that's good.
One thing about Judy, she's very thoughtful.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Which is good, but yes, absolutely, we needed that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, next page, again, um.
So that's it for tonight, right?
Appropriations, yeah, that's it for tonight, um.
So that's it, yeah. Yeah, nothing news, okay.
So my, um, so, this is just about what I expect to keep there covered tonight, so. I think. We have appropriations, we probably could be covered in a meeting, let's say, the first meeting in December, I'll ha- I'll have all the paperwork together.
Yeah.
I'll ask them to have that for the December first meeting, and we'll, I'll schedule a few minutes during the regular select or meeting to go through the appropriations.
Okay.
Um, uh, we need to spend a similar meeting like tonight to talk about highway.
Yeah.
So, uh, I think it would be too much to put it all with a regular select or meeting. Can we, um, come in on Christmas Eve and do this?
What about Christmas Day campaign?
Christmas Day, yes, that's what we should ask about.
Thanksgiving.
Well, that was my question.
I don't think we want to waste Christmas, I would suggest Thanksgiving.
We're not any food.
Yeah, with Mike, Mike, he needed by the workforce.
They just invited us to Thanksgiving in this house, and we can do it after me.
Right. Do you wanna join the wife and I for our meeting, best sharing Thanksgiving, like we do every year?
There you go, there you go.
Bruce will be into it.
I'm not sure, yeah.
I would ask if you will, necessarily.
Yeah.
I have a turkey business.
If he has corn, I'll, he'll stay with corn. Let's take a look at it, pal.
The only thing I would say about the highway fund is that, for the last couple of years, we've tried to level fund it, which has been pretty good. But this year, it's gonna be almost impossible because of FEMA and the other things that we've come across.
Right.
And, and I think, by the same token, we should probably, you guys should take a real hard look at that again.
With your turkey sandwich.
Because there's some things that aren't making too much sense, um.
Yeah, um, yeah. So I think we're gonna have.
Are you talking in terms of expense too much?
Well, yeah, I, I, I think that, you know.
It's not accurate.
It's not accurate, or we don't have a total gamble on it, because, you know, we should be putting thirty thousand dollars away each year for the paving. We should have thirty-nine thousand dollars for expenses for outside vendors, because we're using them. Uh, one year, we might only use twenty thousand, the next year, we're doing forty thousand. Everything, if you have a catastrophic event, you have to bring in these people that have to work, so you gotta maintain that thing, and when highway funding, you can roll that over.
Right. Right.
So you, you know, if you don't use it, you don't lose it.
I, I agree, we've level funded since I had been, since you joined the select or, so it's been eight years.
Yeah.
I, I think that, that, that eight years ago, that was, that hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars was a good number, but that's not enough. Probably.
Well, I, sure.
So, uh, yeah, that, the calendar, um, well, there, today is the tenth, we have a meeting next week, the seventeenth. And we have Thanksgiving, we have the appropriations on the first.
Doc. I think we, I think we're not good as much, but I think we're not good as much.
What is, what is the drop date for the budget? Do, do we know, you know, when we actually have to, when you guys have to actually have it done? Is it?
Well. We have to.
I think by January, we have to come up with a time.
Yeah, we absolutely have to vote it in January, because remember, the main thing is, in order to, in order to warn the articles.
Right, that's.
And warn town meeting to meet all of the other dates that have to happen.
Right, I heard, I listened before.
Don't quote me on this, because I haven't looked at this year's calendar, but of course, the other thing is, I mean, I don't know if people have looked. Our town meeting is gonna be February twenty-eighth.
Oh.
Really?
Because March first is, Tuesday is March first. And our town meeting is the Monday before the first Tuesday.
That's.
It must've changed.
So.
Yeah.
Ooh.
We're, it's, it's early, so.
Last year is the sixth.
Already, that's several days earlier.
Not last.
Yeah, it takes a week off there.
And we have to have the town report. Distributed in some fashion to people. Ten days prior to that.
Prior to that.
That's.
We, the other thing, the main thing is, though, is the warning of the. We have to warn town meeting and the articles for town meeting somewhere, but no, no more than thirty days before. But no less than. Twenty days before, thirty days and forty days before, I can't remember it most, but I think it's thirty and forty. We have to warn it at least thirty days before. Town meeting, so we have to work back from February twenty-eighth. And quickly, we get to the last weekend in January, probably, or the last week in January. You know, so, you know, if we're gonna do it, unless we're gonna have a special meeting. And I'm guessing on these dates, I could be wrong slightly, but this is what happens most years. Realistically, the nineteenth. Is probably the last point at which we can do it. But we also run into this problem that you can't do it too early. Because it can't be more than forty days before town meeting.
But we have to vote, and the.
But we, we have to finalize all of this stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, right.
Before we.
Before we can form it all into the articles.
Yeah.
To warn the actual articles for town meeting.
Yeah, so I would like to have the budget, everything done in December.
Yes.
And then January, we just fine tune and get, uh.
Right, because we're gonna need time to figure out.
School must tell us how much they're gonna tax, tax the community and everything.
I mean, I don't wanna get us too super bogged down in this now, but we also have to decide. It's, we have to decide as we get closer to that, are we gonna have a physical town meeting?
I think we are.
Or are we gonna?
Yes, we have to, uh, we have to do it the same way we've always done it. Uh, because we revert back to the, uh, the non-emergency thing will be up.
Does the. Long ways.
That's, that's where it's on. I agree with you. Well, let me, let me say this, they've expired for now. There's a hell of a lot of stuff that's gonna potentially happen between now and then.
Yes.
Going on. That's true. Exactly.
So I wouldn't be too locked into, I don't know, I think.
Yeah, Wayne, although the grease down, most of it's been representative of, of kids, and now they're getting thirty lined up.
Yeah, although a lot, a lot of older people are, who've been vaccinated, they're still.
Are getting it too.
So it's.
Oh, David, you're absolutely right, we didn't think about that.
So.
Good change.
Um.
Well, we're not gonna lose any sales over there.
Well, I.
Yeah.
But yeah, anyway, we have to, hopefully, we'll know.
Yeah.
We have.
So the drop date date is the end of December.
Right, so I'm saying, let's, let's, let's schedule for, um, do you think we can?
That's asking a lot. I'll just say, we've never, in the five years I've been on the board, we've never gotten it all done by the end of December.
Yeah, right, there's always something open.
We always think, uh.
Something, right.
Doc?
I'm just trying to get, trying to say that we need to have, it doesn't have to be on Wednesday though, but.
Yeah.
Um, yes.
How does it, it refers to eighth and fifteenth of December?
We got the first, the eighth, and the fifteenth.
Does the, does that work? Getting those other data.
Having, having the highway department, we'd be on the eighth.
Yeah.
And the fifteenth, we have the, uh, we have to approve the lease, and maybe make sure the appropriations.
We have a meeting here, 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 then there's a three, uh, where's that three weeks span?
Another three weeks.
There's none there.
No, there was, there will be some.
Another three weeks.
Okay, that's, you know, the first and fifteenth.
I think you're right, that I, I mean, if, personally. I would be very much in favor of us planning on having another budget meeting.
Another hour and a half, which is highway on the eighth.
I mean, hopefully by then. We can get more detail on things, I mean, I. Last year, we. Tried to get both Mark and Archie. Together to be at that meeting, they ended up meeting ahead of time themselves, and basically ended up deciding. We can just level fund everything, so. But that doesn't, I have a feeling, if we really wanna try to. Restructure some of the line items to make them more accurate, like I think we want to do.
Yeah.
We're going to need both of its family.
Yeah, on the eighth, so give them a head up, heads up.
To help us target through.
With respect to the appropriations, have we received everybody's information on this list?
I have not looked at the.
We've received a lot, I don't know if everyone, but, uh, we've got quite a few.
There's a lot, because I. Minutes.
Because I was gonna suggest we could do that next week, if you have it all, but if we don't, we can't.
Yeah, um, um.
The deadline has passed for them.
So, I can ask, I'll ask Judy to pull it together and.
Yeah, we're gonna clutter your, we're gonna clutter December a little bit, if you put that on, on next week, if you have all the information. We could just run right down it, get, get it out of the way, because we have, we have a lot to concentrate on.
Appropriations folder is together, I can say, schedule some time during the speaking of the seventeenth. If she feels that it's incomplete, or there's, or, or some whatever, I wanna do it on the first, but maybe you're right, we could probably spend some time on the seventeenth.
Now, was it, now you, you said something about the lease, lease on the fifteenth.
Well, honestly, we might be able to do, to, to Bruce's point, you know, e- even if we just.
Leave it open.
Even if we're able to go through what we've received at that point, or what's been gathered, it's, and then we finish it on the first.
Yeah.
There, there you go.
And then we get all that done, and then on the eighth, all we've got left, well, I mean, I'll, I have a lot of open questions on other things.
Oh, yeah, so.
But we have highway and the open things on other stuff.
Um.
Cause those are, I mean, we don't usually, other than the volume of them, we don't usually have to debate a lot about the appropriations.
No, honestly, just.
Just honestly, making sure that the main people haven't forgotten to get them to us.
Yeah.
And when is that called? That was in October thirty? Yeah, the, October twenty-ninth, I think, this year.
Yeah.
Wanna start the meeting on December eighth at six or six thirty?
This is for the, this is for the highway part.
Six thirty, six thirty is fine, but if they're undecided, six.
Well, that's kind of a little up to Archie and, and Mark too, right? Whether they, well, not Mark's, I'm sure Archie.
Did enough to talk about it before they get any problem.
Yeah. Either is fine.
Okay, I have a little time to, to, to double check, but I mean, I'll say six thirty then.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's better for them to be one or the other, I feel, if that's true.
Okay.
So, with, with respect to the lease, you mentioned the fifteenth, are you saying we're gonna discuss the lease, or we're gonna have a.
No, at least we need to have, by the fifteenth, we need to vote on the lease and then present it to them, because we.
Can I make a?
Uh, okay.
Uh, can I make a motion to re-adjourn?
Oh, well, just on the agendas, uh, coming up, but, yeah, right.
I don't, I don't think that's on the agenda for tonight, though.
Second.
You're right, you're right, alright, motion to adjourn, seconded by Stan.
You got red light.
Wait, wait, David. Motion to Stan.
You got a red light.
Well, any discussion, all those in favor of joining the seating, special budget meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.